So we're gonna, um, we'll call the meeting in order at seven o'clock. And so we can all say who's here with the minutes are being recorded and I think we're being live recorded by Ben Darbord and Hasencha through the video camera. Hi Ben. So, um, do you want to say who you are?
John Over, here. Victoria Romanoff, partially here.
And Jessica Diallo is here whether or not.
You've got your stories then.
Hannah Carter.
Portia.
Yep.
Portia.
Our zoning officer.
Guy Crowe.
His attorney. Excellent. Okay, so what we're doing right now is we are looking at the minutes from August. Just, we have this one copy and then we can approve those. We still, um, we can approve the July minutes. They just didn't get taped up. So Laura will be here. Also team, she's attempting to help take the notes. We're going to follow the same procedure, their action notes, but in Tammy's absence so that we can perhaps get minutes posted more timely next time, but they will be ratified by the board's court. So do you all get a chance to? Yeah. Okay. So we have a motion to approve the minutes from August 23rd.
Excellent.
Excellent. Minutes approved. Okay, so, uh, as we can, does anyone have any additions or additions to this agenda, which was a very raw form? And so anyone who's looking at the agenda out there in the public, ignore the timing. It's just there.
Should we propose a mini meeting? Let's see another time. There's probably no business. Could we add something? I reread a lot of the letters we've gotten and since I'm not the high tech person here, I chose to go to the office and get everything, you know, in documents. There are a lot of very, very long, interesting, well-studied letters by all kinds of people. I think if we were to choose both sides intelligently, carefully, I think it would be cool for us to have a mini meeting between this one and the next one and just get some of the input because one of, just one of-
Do you want a little work session?
Yeah. Read over what the pluses and minuses were compiled by people that have, some have lived here for 34 years, others are here recently and came here for certain reasons. But I have a feeling that with everything on the computer, with everything else going on, I'm not sure we haven't given it the proper attention. And it doesn't have to be a long meeting. Grab a few letters that you feel are important. I'll do the same and let's talk about them a bit and see what the input was. Because I have a feeling we, I read the one by Jim, I only mentioned this one, by Jim Meissen, who was after all the chair of the board and, you know, all the different courts in Tompkins County, and chair of planning and zoning. An important person here locally. And it's a long letter and I think it'd be good if we, but I haven't thought about it and talked about it. Because we never really had that type of meeting.
Right, right. Well, so that's sort of the next agenda, because you can just talk about the meetings in general. Tammy had mentioned the next two are on holidays, but it's just Thanksgiving is on the 22nd because October 25th. So, um, we can talk about that. I'm happy to, sort of, I think these small details are sometimes better to do now than at the end after we've talked and talked and talked. So do you have, does everyone sort of like that idea of having a work session about the letters, just to be clear on content? And then, I think, did you have a bit of timing advantage?
Well, sort of mid-time between this now and our next meeting, whatever seems reasonable.
So I think I had, right, so again, I had mentioned that maybe the next two meetings were a question, but it's not. So the next meeting would be October 25th.
See how that seems to the people.
So then if you want to sit with something like the 11th and the 18th, it would relate to every state as an obsession. And maybe we can email, maybe the definition of that. So we want to address, I think, good idea. So we want to address that, because the meeting is on the 22nd. And so that would be the fourth Thursday and not a good time, I think, to have a meeting. And so we could do before or after, so the 15th through the 29th. And again, I think we need to double check with Tammy, I don't think that this room is used for anything else. I'm leaning towards the 29th. Does anyone have strong preferences, your Google Calendar? Or is it the top? So we could also email the panel and the, like, if anyone's on the way forever, the 29th through November seems possible.
29th of November.
Instead of the 22nd, which is Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Okay. So then we can tentatively say, the which?
27th.
Of today?
No, no. Is that what you-
No, no, the 29th, which is November, instead of Thanksgiving?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And then if you want to think about, so we can sort of say that is not barring Tammy saying that, of course, you can use it for then, something's happening. Okay. So let's shoot for the November meeting being the 29th. And then let's do a tentative notion of a work session on 19th. That's a Friday on the 18th. No 18th, what about 25th?
Wait, that's the meeting.
The week before.
What about the 11th? Maybe. Maybe, uh-huh. Okay, well, let's, we'll just say maybe and let's follow, follow back on the email for that. Okay, great, thank you.
So do you know November?
So November will be the 29th, barring anything I don't know about in Miller's life, and that would prevent us from doing that for the planning work. But now we're just talking about a work session for the planning work.
So work session, they're saying for November?
Work session in October.
Work session.
Tentatively.
October 1st.
Tentatively.
Okay. And do you have problems communicating?
Yeah, and, yeah. God forbid, do a Google poll, but it can be done.
I love when you talk. Really cool one.
Okay, so, so look, there we are, at 7:07 with board chair comments. So I just am largely wanting to, of course, recognize the public participation continued rate. Cannot say that enough, whether or not it sinks in on its field for us. And especially right now, mentioning all the good work that a lot of you have done to help bring issues to light for us is important, good to review as well. But these comments I wanted to make, this would be to, our team know that we're in a smaller room and can sort of see each other more and don't have a lot of time together. Just to remind us of the process of what we're doing right now, right? So we are looking at the detailed questions of the part two of the EAF, of the SEER review, which really is assessing the environmental impact and reminding us all that the site plan review would be the next step and that the site plan review holds a lot of opportunity to assess really detailed, specific questions about design and other things. And so that this is not, well, as Guy was pointing out, they dovetail in some of the questions, especially 17th and 18th. It's largely the environmental focus only, so we don't have to feel like, you know, feel like we can sort of see, all of us each other. Wouldn't we get to say for this and just reminding us that we have site planning, that is also a in-depth process, overall impact. So barring that then, anything else come to mind in the next five seconds? If there's nothing, we could begin with part two, which is, we isolated topics that needed for analysis. We have Lance here from M.R.B., just experienced, who gave us some cues and some sites on, you know, whatever they do to part one. So does everyone have in front of them a part one and a part two which to refer? And Lance, do you want to just give a brief introduction?
Sure. So, good evening. Last meeting, we all went through, the board went through the part two of the SEER and basically each one of the categories there, we identified those categories that we thought that were potential impacts were associated with. And so we went through it very thoroughly, each one, and identified a no or a yes to a potential category that we thought may be an impact, might occur. Tonight's goal is to take those areas where we identified guesses and go through it even more thoroughly, each one of the identified questions and determine the potential impact that we believe that it may occur on that site, both no, small, or the moderate to large. So everybody has in front of them a part two, I believe, then, correct? The corrected part two, based on last meetings.
Oh, so you have my copy?
I have copies for everyone.
Oh, okay, let's take those, just in case.
The part two hasn't been re-dated to, just because I re-dated it for the 14th one.
Great, thank you.
But it doesn't mean it has newer, different information there.
It's all based on your last meeting.
Okay.
So everything that we discussed in the last meeting, the corrections that we made at the last meeting.
Have it.
Okay.
It's those, September 27th dated.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, with that being said, I mean, there's many ways to go through it. I can read each one individually, we can re-address what that, the question is, and then go through each A through H and the board can discuss those questions and then use both the app and turn it myself for questions and answers on those.
Yes, no.
So the first one was number one, impact on land, we identified that as a yes. That is, the proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of which the proposed, of the proposed site. The first question of that category is A, the proposed action may involve construction on land where depth of water table is less than three feet. So I believe the EAF part one identifies that this site contains a water table that's shallow and ranges, it's got a very variable range, I think it was like two to 15 or whatever. So there is a potential for a shallow water table, obviously with wetlands on site, it's going to happen. Question is, is whether or not this is a small or no impact, or if it's a large impact. Depth of water table, they'll be designing around as part of the stormwater review, the reports. No, there's no, I'm sorry.
Oh, just a quick question on that. The water table impact on land is described as between one foot to 17.
One to 17, okay.
Yes. And how do we drift from one to 17?
So there's many different kinds of soils on the site, because of the various soils, which have a certain category characteristics associated with them. So each one, the water table varies. So when they do a soils report-
Some won't absorb it, some absorb extremely readily.
Some soils are more permeable than others.
So that's what that describes? Because it's, it's hard to read that water table from this to that.
But they, they gave us that range because of the amount of soils that are on site, so they wanted to show that there wasn't that-
There's that much variety, they go from one to 17.
Exactly. And remember, there's wetlands. Wetlands are always very shallow.
Right. When I look through the soils logs, it was one reading where it was less than three feet. How does one deal with that? Do you, do you build around that somehow, or do you, are you looking at the average?
So, yeah, where, where physical, where you can, you build around it, and you design around it so that you're not directly impacting it. But where you do impact it, you're trying to protect the water itself so that it doesn't have any-
Discharge of contaminants that would impact that.
In this particular case, I think we're looking at mostly, it's all going to be pipes, water and sewers. Everything's going to be collected through a storm sewer system and then piped and ultimately discharged to a pond, that doing the infiltration and the cleaning of the water.
So that's about contamination?
Ultimately, yes.
Lance, if I could just clarify though, we are not actually infiltrating any of the surface stormwater. The only spots where we might have any impacts to groundwater is where we have inside the shortly wetland, there's plunge pools, which are required to have standing water to allow sediments to kind of settle out before they actually get into the pipe opening. So we are not infiltrating any water. All of our stormwater practices also then have to have, the filters we have have to have the separation compartments from groundwater. So as you'll see on Brady Plan, most of the site, as we get down to the lower part of the site, is in a fill condition. We're raising everything up to stay away from, you know, the groundwater.
So, did anyone on the board find a reason why this would be a moderate to large impact? With detailed back-up information, so it seems like?
I feel that with climate change, which is upon us, which is going to probably literally permeate everything we're talking about, that we need to take as deep a look at everything as we possibly can.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because it's not, it's not like it was 25 years ago. No, no place on this planet right now.
Right.
I think it's our biggest assignment, that anything we do, where there is already water compromise in the area, we need to look as deep as we can and as carefully as we can. So I would drift towards a more serious approach.
Well, so in having done your review and depth investigation of question of A under one, did you find any information that shows that this would be large impact? This particular one of the water table issue?
In the sense that we cannot predict, predict the weather anymore and don't know what's in store for us, we have to look at it from a deeper perspective. More than 70 feet.
I'm just clarifying the point here. Remember, what we're looking at here is for impact on the land. We're going to have the ability to look at impacts on surface water, impacts on flooding, impacts on groundwater as completely-
In other words, tougher opportunities.
Element of this evaluation. So just remember that this is asking, this is just setting a context to say, okay, this is a particularly, you know, high water table. There's some chance that could affect the land. And, you know, how much of that? So I'm sort of thinking that where I feel like it's possible that there may be more room for decision to make, you know, or largely, I don't disagree with the board.
I don't disagree with it. Yeah. I, I think it's serious, but I think I don't disagree with it.
Okay, so then we can say no or small impact, one A, and move on to the B.
Let's see. I just have one question. You can answer in terms of relative amounts, since it says that 14.8 acres of the site will be physically disturbed, and since the preface on this, or the, the main title here is proposed action that may involve construction or physical alteration of, so we're not just talking about like contamination of, but physical alteration of about three quarters of the site. Do we know how much of that is in that zero to three foot range?
Primarily, the zero to three foot range is your wetland area. And primarily, their, their only disturbance would be ultimately necessary and ultimately covered by the Army Corps or Nationwide permit. So I don't know the percentage of the site that is, but it's under the threshold that would require them to go any further for, let's say, a wetland permit above what is covered by the Nationwide permit.
Can you give any kind of a 10%, 30%, 2% of that 15?
I, I don't feel confident in telling you a number that I can't.
The DEC workbook does give you examples of major or significant, more significant effects moderate to large in this particular question. And maybe we can just take a minute, because I think it's still lightning.
Do you have the workbook with the-
I was going to point out one of the things that you needed. Whether you believe that the amount of water in this particular part of the country due to precipitation or other factors will increase or decrease based upon the amount of CO2 or whatever else in the environment, that would happen regardless of whether there's a project here. What SEER is trying to measure is the impact of the project. So part 617.7C, when you're looking at questions like this, you're also supposed to consider the setting. Is it developed urban world? Where is it? Is it in a desert? Is it in a jungle? Its probability of occurrence, the duration, irreversibility, which generally refers to lost resources about it. If you destroy a gorge, you can't just build another gorge. It's geographic scope. Are you building over the Grand Canyon or on half an acre? It's magnitude, the number of people affected. So purely speculative impacts, this might happen 10 years from now, this might happen 20 years from now. You have to take into account whether they are direct and real impacts, whether they're measurable, whether they tend to be speculative things. What the weather might be in 2028 is probably under the SEER standards going to be speculative. What the amount of impervious surfaces are on the site and how will that increase in water that flows through the land is going to be managed to make sure it doesn't exacerbate an existing condition, that's the SEER issue. So SEER, beyond the workbook, has specific guidelines for looking at these types of issues. I would just encourage you to consider that because every exercise can be respec. Not developing the land as an impact too. And that's not what SEER is trying to measure. So just for two cents, I look at those standards too, settings, probability of occurrence, geographic scope of the impact, things like that.
May I ask a quick question about what you were just saying? If we remove major portions of soil on that site and regrade it, with given that the variety of soils are there, we could be exposing one that either absorbs or less absorbs what's coming down on it. In other words, there are major enough changes being made on the site that will kind of reconstruct its absorption capabilities in different areas? Because it's not remaining stable as it was as a hayfield.
So far that, so the agenda, your question about how much, how much feet is going to stem? I think that actually has a breadth of the analogy.
Yeah, but it's just something you think about.
Absolutely, and I can't remember the question off the top of my head. Little bit more than 100 cubic yards of material there, I did three C.
In other words, I'm suggesting we're making there enough major soil changes in removal of layers from one area to another to affect that.
Let's talk about that at three C.
Yeah. But, you know, it opens here. It opens here.
I would rather shoot specifically the examples. Major excavation that does not involve a high water table, such as residential development with full basements and high water table, or not do the basements.
I want to, yeah.
Mining, mining activity, especially in one of those places, activities that does not have equilibrium between amounts of groundwater withdrawals and recharge. So sucking out large amounts of groundwater but not putting it back in. And a project where solid has displaced production, storage or disposal takes place, and a project that destroys a bulk petroleum or chemical bulk storage takes place. Those are the types of things that the DEC workbook says are moderate to large impacts for groundwater. I'm just saying, we don't have any of those examples. Our things are minor excavation, more what they define as small impacts.
But we're not doing groundwater yet.
I thought that's the question.
On impact on that.
Yes. The first groundwater question is impact, is groundwater. Go figure.
But just, just speaking to that, I'm sorry if this takes a field, but for the private lots, I thought that that was up to the destruction, that there could be basements.
Right, but right now, there are no basements proposed. So if, when private lots come in, there's a, there's a basement proposed, you would have danger SEER review. You would address it at that time, because it's not consistent with what you approved. Right now, no basements are proposed. There could be a basement, but that would have to be addressed when they come in. You would look at that, if you would specifically look at those soils and where the water table is, and if there's a high water table, where there's a base you propose, you would say, ooh, that might be significantly adverse impact. If you do that, you're going to have to use a liability impact statement. And chances are, the person's going to say, well, I'm not going to do that then.
Is this kind of separated out then?
It's not, because the project as a portfolio is not a basement. As Claudia said, if someone comes in and wants basement, she's going to consider that. But she would have to come back to you and say, I'm changing the project. You would address it as a change.
It would be an amendment to the project that you guys are looking at right now. It's something different that we're not considering at this time. Any amendment requires them to provide information back to the board, potentially back to the board, and ultimately go back through this process that we're doing now.
Guy, is that an amendment, or if it's stated in the plans that there could be basements as it stands now?
Well, yeah, we're starting to bridge well beyond what this question is and getting the site plan. Because a site planning determination or a condition of approval might be no basements, or no basements where you might have excavation within eight feet of a aqua confined layer or three feet of a water table. So you may have some conditions that you might want to make sites specific for people that do want basements. But what this question is asking is, are you disturbing the land close to a water table without doing stormwater mitigation? Are you disturbing, are you doing excavation that, that isn't avoiding the high water mark? Are you commercially applying pesticides at such levels such that they're likely to get into the water table? These are basically what the DEC considers minor impacts. So I, when I look at the project, and then again, I'm not the one that gets to decide, you are. I'm not seeing that there is a lack of a stormwater, but I think it's been pretty thoroughly vetted. It's not final, but stormwater mitigation is part of what's going on. I'm not necessarily seeing that you deliberately have gone in the wetlands to disturb them to make them a part of the major construction aspect of the project. And I'm not seeing major excavations, let alone major excavations that, that are impacting the high water taking a spot. But if you get into site planning and you identify a zero to ZR, you might have a rule that says no installation of basements or excavation within five feet of the water table. That may mean that three of the houses can have basements and maybe even, I don't know.
So you're confident that there are 14.8 acres on the site that are outside of the zero to three foot water table?
No, I'm not.
That are part of the current plans of-
No, I'm not a geologist. What I am saying is that if you weigh these impacts, you're not looking for perfection, you're looking to see, have the potential impacts been mitigated? And are they small impacts or are they moderate or large impacts? As the developer substantially proposed disturbance that could impact water tables when they're doing development in areas where the water table is less than three feet down. You have a stormwater plan, a development plan, and advice from our engineer. You get to weigh all that advice against whatever other factors you wish weighing and answer this question. But if you want to say that, is it possible to do excavation without impacting the water table, then the answer to that will wholly be that SEER is trying to measure.
I just, I don't know if this is the right, because I'm not sure how the workbook takes it all in. If we're just taking this question at face value, it doesn't include all those things. That, that seems what you're saying, is you're including a whole lot of other factors and kind of-
I think the SEER process in general includes a whole lot of the factors that were just addressed and that if, that we could, we could debate our, all of our concerns on the very first question of this process.
What reason I'm pushing this right now is kind of-
As a planning board, as a planning board, and make sure we're on-
This is like a test.
Yeah, a test of what, though?
It is a test of, are we going through these step by step for the, for the merit of each one? Or are we looking at each of these really in terms of the context and the synthesis with the whole project?
The answer is yes.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have a plan, I'm sorry, again, to kind of mucky up things at the very beginning, but does anyone have the actual plans of, of the sites, you can see like topography and-
Yeah. And all of the applications that have the public maps.
Yeah, I've got those. Can I, yeah, sorry. Excellent. And, and that's not a long, it says the end, sorry, it's very, that I just wanted to, uh...
So with regard to the planned development-
Of course.
Proposed development being no basements with adding extra fill and acknowledging that a large amount of the land is wetland, which establishes the water table being low, do we have concern as the four planning board members who are this proposal, and it is count five of us, do we feel like this is a small impact or a moderate to large impact on the scale of mining, dredging, all those other things that got included from the-
Well, I put the lighter stuff.
From the DEC.
You couldn't.
Sorry.
No, but no big deal. I'm just saying, they, you know, they're talking about impact and they're saying, are you actually lowering the relationship, the land surface to the water table or substantially negatively impacting the water table itself in the project? That's what they're trying to get at.
Right.
If there's five feet of overburden, have you reduced it to two and not making it a storm?
Thank you. Team?
Well, you know, I'm, I'm thinking that it's a small to moderate impact.
Yeah, right.
So I'm not exactly sure which to check, but I think I tipped toward the small side by the fact that most of the wetlands, from what the maps show us, are not involved in the actual construction areas. And that's what the water table is and that's what they're talking about. So I think I'd, you know, the small, like I said, it's a small to moderate.
Tom? That's where I am, I, as I recall, is like point seven or point three acres of wetland that are impacted in one way or another.
Point zero seven.
Point zero seven.
Which again, is under the threshold that requires an additional permitting process by Army Corps. They're under that threshold. They're covered by, any one of us could be wanting to disturb that much and wetlands and I have to go through a different process.
Can water tables?
We agree.
Okay. So let's, let's market it small and move forward with notes that like, this isn't resolved. We have, and, right? I'm saying that, that's the question.
Because I'm definitely not in a small-
You're more on the water, but it's small.
Definitely, yeah. The water on that site, more than any other issue.
Okay, so let's make sure all your, the water concerns, like we suggested- Okay, so let's make sure all your, the water concerns, like we suggested, are gonna get addressed and discussed in questions. If they're not, and the point being.
I'll screen and holler.
Yeah, do it, okay.
Yeah, it's to me a very, like a major, major.
Absolutely.
Is Lauren doing something that relates to this? I'm not sure what's going on.
I'm sorry, you just ignore it.
So if Laura's zoning off of her, is always available, we have zoning questions of her, that's her area here.
I have her, but who's here is listening for something, so.
And this, you're checking a lot at this point, but until you actually make a determination, nothing we determine now is hiding. You could look at something in eight pages and go back, well, let's go back and revisit that. Not that you should, you get through it once and then go back and start doing your fine tuning if you need to. Because otherwise, we get an L A book right now.
Yeah, yeah, just wanna see if we could, it's not, right, we haven't badified this stuff. We're disagreeing that.
So it's still open to return to that little box?
To that one A, yeah.
That little shoebox.
Do you wanna address one B then, their lands?
Sure, proposed action may involve construction on slopes of 15% degree. I think the majority of the site is pretty flat, and split lands. I don't know if I needed to go into that.
Yeah, anyone, did anyone find any detailed information that was suggested, otherwise to?
There's no way there's a 15% slope like that.
Yeah. Okay, Steve?
Sorry, I have too much money to answer. All right. The proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of the existing ground surface. I don't believe that's an issue for the site.
Okay. Did anyone find, at any point, I'm just gonna not say after, or see if anyone found otherwise, right? Like I looked and said, oh, the average bedrock is greater than 25 feet, great, no, move on. But if anyone found anything detailed, just pipe up, okay?
I understand.
Dean?
Proposed action may involve excavation and removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material. That's from the site, remove it from the site.
Right, which we addressed before and in part line it's not, okay?
The proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases. And as discussed with this project, it's proposed to occur over a length of time and be developed in phases.
I suspect someone hasn't given the answer.
Now, a question about that. In the traffic study, that is, I call this gum of the wind, sorry, but this volume.
The action.
Yeah. There is a phrase in there that got me a little bit alarmed. It basically said that the completion of this project is projected to be 10 years from now. And I read that and I said, no, this can't be. And I read it again and it still lives in there. But just a suggestion, with the high-tech modular building we're capable of doing today, if this project is gonna take as long as it's, I saw three different dates for the completion of this, or four portions of it. But if it will take as long as it's suggested, while it's in that area, I would certainly be moving somewhere. Is how about pre-built panels? I mean, we have construction techniques and services today like we've never had before. In building yards, you get your homes pre-built, you bring them on the back of a truck, and there it is, and a week later, it's assembled. And this seems like a sort of a snail pace for an existing neighborhood to be putting up with a length of time. The one, the date that alarmed me was the traffic study, which implies 10 years of completion.
Maybe I can address that, because I think there's some confusion there.
Maybe there is, I mean, yeah, by the time you read.
Yeah, sure. We've had a lot of back and forth, there's a lot of information. So let me see if I can summarize what I think is the confusion. So the majority of the construction at the site will take place over 14 months, right? All of the site will be graded in that 14 months. All of the infrastructure, all of the roadways, all of the utilities, everything gets installed in that 14 months. So we're basically talking about a 14-month construction schedule. There are portions of the site that are what I call market-driven, right? The stuff Claudia is going to be doing. It's not that those sites are gonna be under construction for 10 years. It's that nothing may happen, nothing will happen until a lot is sold and someone wants to build a house. So the house will be built quickly. But the overall market period, the period in which all of those lots are expected to sell has been projected to be 10 years.
But that's a one for one important thing. That is that if the lots can be sold whenever and however, it could be a continuous whacking, banging, and grinding and sawing. I mean, I work with construction every day of my life.
Right, and so.
In other words, it doesn't say that the lots will be sold in a given time and that will be completed for those houses. It could be an ongoing thing, one is sold, two are sold, it goes on and on and on and on.
Right, so there are only so many lots. And I can tell you, it could not be in constant construction for 10 years. That would not be physically possible, as you say. There are that many units. But we also did propose a detailed construction mitigation plan, because this issue is actually raised for the public here. So we provided that information, I believe it's one of the tabs in the last round of some bills. We can certainly view that. We've tried to address that by managing the potential impacts. Because of course, nobody wants to live with constructions over 10 years. That would make any sense whatsoever.
So I was just allowing to read that sentence, I don't know why it was put in that way.
The other thing is, as far as the traffic study goes, when we do a traffic study, we try to look as far out in the future as we think there may be an impact. So if it took 10 years for this to build out, what would be the traffic impact at that time, given the other background growth that could take place over that time period? Which is that percentage of growth that we use every year? So that's why the traffic study looks out 10 years. It could be built much sooner, I mean, the whole thing could be done in two years. But the traffic study looks at a worst-case scenario as far out as possible.
Right, because the traffic, traffic study assumes every year, background traffic's just gonna keep building. It often doesn't, because population levels aren't changing. But it assumes it does, so you have a worst-case scenario on your traffic analysis.
And so what I would have had was, okay, so what level of construction are we talking about for that more than one year? So, and then I started getting deeper into questions of noise and light pollution and what are the decibel levels of construction equipment, having them, some myself. And so looking at that and living on Link Street and saying, well, you know, if they're building their garage, like the amount of noise in here, people's home improvements continuously anyway, what is that like versus one single built house? What is that like versus how the 20 to 30 years that Larchmont was built, house by house, there was some amount of construction noise? Are there going to be earth numbers, lots of them? Are they going to be operating from seven to seven for how many years? Like I think that I was really concerned about, about those sorts of noises. And I don't know, I just gave the answers, but I would like to investigate some of that. And certainly, if they all, what if all the market lots sold all at once in two years of heavy construction? Could that be, would that be?
And I would reiterate the point, we have construction today. We bring a building on back of a truck and it's done in, you know, I'm exaggerating, of course, but in a day, you basically have it. It is banged and screwed in and nails and cutting and sawing right at the site. And this goes in little drippy implements, it could be pre-ordered for. Even the people that maybe would have some of the obvious residences there. For everybody, basically. Just the sort of long-term effect. When you read the 10 years in traffic study, you gotta look a little bit.
Yeah, my thinking is, it's a, again, focused on the land. The question is, it says, you know, the ability of all construction continued for more than one year. Well, minimum, we're talking about during 14 months, it means clearly more than a year. So, and you know, that's, I'm tipping to large, in terms of that particular question, I have to take the issue.
Yeah. I mean, I, no, I'm tipping towards kind of small. Like obviously, there's going to be an impact, but I mean, yeah, I kind of tip towards small. Tom?
I tend towards small or moderate. I think that definitely the 14, if the major excavation is done in 14 months, that's the noise. House construction is not that noisy. The apartments.
But also, we love you so much, but we also do need to stay focused.
No, I'm watching a house go up on Route 96, it's pretty low impact.
So, okay, okay, so you're leaning towards small?
To moderate.
So we don't have that category. It's, no, we're small or mostly large. Oh, and again, maybe this is the clarification from the D E C workbook that says, please remember what a moderate to large means. And I don't know if we have our meaning.
The small impacts that they gave examples is construction that occurs in multiple phases, which this does. But the overall level of.
I'm having a hard time hearing our expert friends in the crowd, if you can whisper a wire, thank you.
But the overall level of activity will not be substantially different from a single phase of the project. So I read that as, after the 14-month period, which is the majority of the construction, will the remaining portions of construction be very similar to what you would see in a single phase? I would argue that possibly yes, you know, it becomes a single-family residential construction project after that, which is strictly from a small driveway house. The second option they gave you as an example of small impact was, construction will continue for more than one year, but activity will be imminent. There will be spurts of activity for less than two months at a time, perhaps seasonal for one or two years.
So seasonality is actually a really great question. So if it's 14-year build-out plan because of grading and provided, everything went through and all the funding was in place, are you grading in the winter months? I mean, is it 14 months of construction weather permitting? Or is it 14 months taken into consideration when in order?
Sure.
If it's 14 months taken into consideration, we would plan to start in November.
Okay, okay. All right, team, what are we ready? Want to eat? You, we have, we can, we can have two folks feeling like it's moderate to large, three folks feeling like it's small, and come back to it as we move forward? How do you feel about that option?
I feel terrible strongly about this particular question.
Okay, well, so then let's, let's, let's see, because I think that some of the issues for removal are gonna come up in the, in the lighting and noise factor for this operation.
Right, you know.
Kind of, I think. Looking towards the.
You just brought it up here, you know, we had something to say about it, we see.
Okay. Great, Lance?
Yep, the proposed, the proposed action may result in an increase in erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including treatment by herbicides. So will this site or project result in an increase in potential and erosion? So typically, I review that as, I feel like every site has that potential for erosion to occur that could impact off-site lands without those natural features on the site. My argument to that is in every project as well, they also are obligated to follow D E C protocol for erosion and sediment control measures. There's a construction sequence that outlines the steps of construction for the project so that when they're building it, there's, there's a method to the madness, let's say, of how to control the site to the best I can during construction to prevent the off-site discharge. D E C also governs this project or any project that has a stormwater pollution plan and a general permit, so that once construction begins, they're obligated to adhere to that permit.
And part of that governance is inspection.
That's correct.
And site visitation.
One of the biggest components of that is, is erosion, you know, erosion and then sediment and being discharged off-site.
Okay, yeah, I didn't find any, I mean, I looked at it and checked out how many, you know, acres and then there was an 0.69 on 19.11 acres, 25%, is that considered moderate? Small, moderate, and that, we're really small, so I found it, you know. Anyone have a strong determination in any other direction for this question? Okay, Jean? Oh, no, hey, maybe we don't even need to ask Lance to read that one. The proposed action is, or maybe we're created within a coastal erosion hazard area. We are not in a coastal erosion hazard area defined by the coastline being, if I can't get moisture this morning south from the ocean. And.
Stelzen.
So we did not, we did not trigger two, we did trigger three.
That is, the proposed action may affect one or more weapons or other surface water bodies, strange rivers, ponds, or lakes. We identified that as a yes, which Wetlands are located on that site. Item A, the proposed action may create a new water body. I believe definition of water body in the sentence, and maybe I'm wrong, is streams, rivers, ponds, or lakes, of which none of this project is creating, so.
I found the same Google document. B, though I did look at the difference between retention pond and detention pond, because, yeah. I'll work it out for you, okay? Um, B?
Proposed action may result in an increase or decrease of over 10% or more than 10 acres, increase or decrease in the surface area of any water, of any water body, any body of water, excuse me.
I did, right, there's no water body, I mean, just back in the wetlands, I'm still doing, yeah, okay. So, Steve?
Can I just say to the audience?
Oh, I'm not really good with the comment though.
Well, if we're trying to follow this, could you just reiterate every time you are, which one you're checking?
Oh, sure, so no to small.
Yeah, so could you just do that with everyone so I can follow and fill it out, please?
Yeah, though I can guarantee, if we determine it's a moderate to large impact, we'll say those words too. So if I get confused in an hour and a half, forgive me, but I will try to say no to small. Okay, so C, three C?
The proposed action may involve dredging more than 100 cubic yards of material from wetland or water body. As mentioned, they're under the threshold for doing disturbances to the wetlands. Will there not be 100 cubic yards drenched from there?
Oh, just because I did get super dorky about the calculations, looked up that 100 cubic yards is 0.062 acre feet, just as we're looking at other things in terms of acreage. Okay?
And just understand that when it says dredge more than 100 cubic yards, if there were 102 cubic yards to be dredged, that doesn't mean it's a moderate or large impact. That means you need to take a look at it.
Take a look at it.
Because it's above a certain threshold and it may be a moderate or large impact. If it's being dewatered and replaced on-site, it's being planned for the stormwater, it's being regulated and permitted by ACE, Army Corps of Engineers, those may be factors you consider in mitigation. They may not be, depends on what you think, when you weigh it all up.
Okay, so that's no to small.
D, the proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater with pedal wetland or in the bed or banks of any water body. So the project does have freshwater wetlands on-site that have been delineated, been identified. There will be some disturbances to those wetlands, but under the threshold that would require an Army Corps of Permit above the Nationwide Permit. The Nationwide Permit is a governing permit that grants us also knowing you can do some level of disturbance to those wetlands without mitigation.
Okay, so that's no to small. E?
E, the proposed action may create turbidity in the water body, either from upland erosion runoff or by disturbing bottom sediments. So I typically review this comment and I usually identify this as a potentially small for the reasons being that a proposed action has, with wetlands on-site, there's always an ability for there to be some level of erosion control runoff entering those wetland areas. So they will do, and I say they, every project will do the best they can to protect it in accordance, like I mentioned earlier, with the D E C threshold, the approved site plans, the approved erosion sediment control programs to prevent that from occurring. And they're obligated to prevent that from occurring. But because that option exists, is why we put it on that route.
Okay.
And if it's helpful on the inspections for a project this size, qualified professional, we'll have to do inspections every week.
Every week?
Every week. If we start more than five acres, which dwell at one time, we do twice per week.
And that's a D E C?
That's a D E C requirement within the project, so.
Right, so they'll be obligated to monitor the site above any, I mean, the village has the ability to monitor it as often.
Just a qualified, what did you say, qualified?
It's a landscape architect, professional engineer, a certified professional with erosion sediment controls. There's, there's a part of it too, that qualified inspection.
And then of course, I mean, D E C is most likely not gonna be there out there on a weekly basis, but if there was a reason for it, then you'd be, yeah, so.
Wait, did you say how long they have to be doing this every week?
The time you open your speeding permit, which is your insurance serving, for the time you close out, which is.
Pretty much the duration of the project, it'll be inside from the site.
So now, now, so you. So now, now you can tell me that I'm asking a question from the wrong block that came to my mind, which is, so if we notice then as a community, let's, let's say, because we are only on three, let's say construction happened and we were noticing seriously adverse effects of erosion, water runoff, whatever, the community, be part of it, has the ability to bring it to the village's attention who then can consult and say, go check that site right now, something is wrong. And things can get.
So twice, twice a week, there will be a report that's being provided, both on-site, to all the players on-site, and ultimately to the village as well. And that's, that report's going to have a number of comments and questions adhering to basically the important, these type of questions as erosion sediment control measures up and operating in accordance with the permit. Is their sediment running off the site? Is the facility being controlled in a way that we asked it to be controlled? Are they following the sequence? Are they following our conditions? Are they following your conditions? And those reports twice a week for a while that will provide acres will be provided by them to us.
Okay.
And a report.
Someone did see an issue, they also could call the D E C, which would send out an inspector and an officer.
Okay.
They started issuing tickets and there are issues and those tickets are insubstantial.
Great, okay, thank you.
Actually, that happened twice in the past year.
Yep.
Good. Okay, so I think rates of them were doing no or small for B. And now on to A.
The proposed action may include construction of more, of one or more intakes for withdrawal of water from surface water. So that would be pulling water from the wetlands and that's not occurring.
Okay, so that's no or small.
G, the proposed action may include construction of one or more outfalls for discharge of wastewater to surface water. Typically, this is what you see with a wastewater treatment project where they have an outfall discharge which goes to the stream or creek. This one's saying if you have more than one, that would be a trigger. There isn't a wastewater treatment plan proposed as part of this project.
Okay.
Or an outfall that would be considered applicable to this comment.
So that's no or small. H?
The proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation or other degradation of receiving water lies. I view this similar to the previous erosion sediment control comments where there's always that potential for some discharge of erosion assimilated into surface water. However, as I mentioned, they're geared to follow all those protocols.
There's also no leak streams and this and that ones.
Correct.
Right next to it, okay. So no or small. I?
The proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site of the proposed action. Again, definition of water bodies or example, maybe of the least.
Okay, uh, okay, so no or small. Okay. Jay?
The proposed action may involve the application of pesticides or herbicides in or around any water body.
So again, not an agricultural use coming in, any pesticides, residential. I think sort of addressed for that question a little bit in part one. John?
Uh, I just want to briefly go back to I. There seems to be, uh, some of us have noticed some confusion. There, the state law says there will be no runoff off of the site greater than what it was as an undefined term. But there is some runoff being planned for the site, as I understand, is that right?
Some runoff being planned for the site?
Yeah, I mean, in the, in the drainage plan, is there any runoff that's happening?
You'll still have runoff coming off the site. We'll have water, but we have to slow it down and we have to, we have to filter it first, we have to treat it first. That's what the practices will do.
Okay. Now, and, but that does not exceed what is currently runoff.
It has to be less by law.
Yeah, the rates have to be less right now, there's, there's, you know, runoff going through the fields and filtering. We have to take down the paving services and filter those basically in accordance.
And they're obligated to treat the water, that's, that's criteria number one. So all the water has to be collectively filtered before it can even leave the site. And by doing so, they're holding it back so the time of concentration, which is the point from which water hits the ground and then gets ultimately discharged, is a longer period of time than what is currently going on. Right now it's hitting, you know, unfiltering and just going.
And those hundred and plus comments from M R B to Andy on the SWIP?
Yeah.
That, that's where he drills into the details and they have some pretty detailed questions and they then redo their math a number of times to make sure. So it's really, it's, it's law and then it's designed by an engineer with his license and then reviewed by an engineer with his license.
And then ultimately then reviewed by D E C. In accordance with the issues.
And is this periodically inspected as well?
So the site itself, the entire site, as you see it on the plans, where it was under construction that time, the entire thing's under that permit and they're obligated to adhere to both the plans and the conditions of that D E C permit that they're given, which has a whole standard set of conditions that are on it that you're obligated to meet. That's protecting the perimeter, that's holding back the water and sediment, that's maintaining it in proper condition, stabilizing it as they go. And then if you ask for a five-acre wave, which is a, we talked about it briefly earlier, which would trigger two inspections per week, that has, that has a whole separate level of conditions that are obligated to it to me.
It's probably helpful, but also annually, once the project is done, all the permanent controls are in place, they can't just walk away and not maintain. So the D E C has a requirement annually, a qualified professional again, has to come out, inspect those practices. We're going in to build mini golf, you know, so a little pond is easier there. We go every year, we make sure it's not silted in, you know, make sure that all the pines are open and all of that. And then you submit that report again to the village. So it's not that you build it and you walk away.
Now who's on the hook for fixing it if there's an error around?
The owner is, and then usually there's an operation maintenance agreement with municipalities that say if you don't do that, we have a right to come in, make those modifications and move back charge you, you know, to pay for those repairs.
So in terms of the single market, four-market homeowner, they're on the hook? Or the developer?
Whoever's signed all the permit.
Okay, that's good.
So the owner of the permit is who D E C would ultimately, there's a mission. So that's who.
Yeah, all the permanent practices, so all the ponds and filters that are designed right now are actually under I H S emergency. So those would be their responsibility, the higher that professional every year to.
Okay, cool.
And there will be, I would recommend, you will decide, or the village will decide, there will be a stormwater, what I call the S O B, stormwater operation management reporting agreement. And they can be very, very likely, but there's multiple levels of them. Basically what they do is they mandate the maintenance repair, upkeep, and improvement of facilities. So one of the other things that has a village on offer is if they design a stormwater system, but it actually doesn't work as it was designed.
Yeah.
Then they gotta go back and redesign it and improve it and make sure that it's not throwing off sediment, it's not causing erosion. And so every year, there's going to be a stormwater report that goes to the D E C on how are all your facilities being managed, you know, it's work. And the village has an obligation under EPA for its Phase II stormwater regulations to make sure that there's a mechanism in place to make sure that this thing is permanently maintained. And so charging back, including a real property tax, those are the mechanism whereby you can make sure that the village is not creating a public expense.
Okay.
The taxpayers have to shoulder. There's other ways of doing that too. You can do enforcement proceedings, you can do drainage districts. But as far as this question goes, and that, that's really getting the site planning done. I think you probably have your answer, but you guys have to decide that.
Okay, so J, pesticides, herbicides around the water body. And I, actually, we went to I. John, do you feel like you got your, okay, so we're on J.
Wait, sure.
Sorry?
I just had a question, you know, I'm going to the preliminary stormwater calculations.
Wait, what?
Stormwater calculations.
So are we referring to one of the, this is a general question, Laura, or are we referring to?
It's having to do with the, um.
Because Paul and I are falling around by number, so I'm wondering if you're relating to specific.
Well, it has to do with runoff from the site, so I'm not sure which one.
That's number I. I, number I.
Do you have the calculations here? I'm looking at pages four, um, five and six, primarily four and along with six.
The stormwater calc, one of several.
The preliminary.
Yeah, there's a separate volume that's just the stormwater calc. We separated, we did another separate cover back in December. So I didn't bring that particular volume just because it's so, it's all just storming.
And again, it's been approved by the D E C?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
It's gotta go through this board.
And then?
Through us and then ultimately.
First, we're on our third round of review with Lance.
Okay.
I'm just concerned because in the summary, it, it was kind of a general summary, but then in the kind of details where it follows to three of the hydrologic modeling results, discusses that for, as you break down the launch ads into two A, two B, and C, that there's going to be, and it says that it's largely due to conversion of some existing metal or stone, site ratings modify the decreased acreage of property, drainage, sap street, but some areas couldn't be captured due to site topography. So basically it's saying there's going to be, there are just going to be increased runoff in acres.
Some areas will continue to have runoff as it was prior to this. Like the rears of some of the residential properties where topography is being maintained as it currently exists now because they're not grading it, they're not disturbing the metal or the tree line. So that water runoff will still go and flow as it currently does. Most, if not all of the area that they're touching is going to be collected and treated, which is required for the necessary.
So I'm not questioning the treated area, I'm talking about there's some parts of the site that it said runoff is going to go offsite.
Yeah, so runoff always goes off the site, right? Because runoff doesn't stay anywhere, this is water. What that's saying is there are areas now where water runs off the site, that will continue. And those are not, there should not be permanent surfaces going. If there were, we'd have to capture that and treat it because you still can't change the volume of runoff going offsite pre, compared to pre-construction.
For, where you're not rerouting it, so if you're going to do something like if we were building New Orleans, I'm not building anything, if someone were proposing to build New Orleans and you might be redirecting water and changing your runoff from one site to another, that would be addressed to that area. Laura, does that answer your question sufficiently?
Um, I'm, I think it's one of those things that people can look into a little bit more.
You, we're gonna, we'll get you those rate, rate calculations maybe since.
And, and we'll get different, since baseball, I guess, different, um, rainfalls.
Yeah, rainfall event, there's a calculation that says New York State has this average rainfall event that they designed to have.
So especially since there's been some question as to what data have been used.
So they use the state protocol for that rainfall, which is what is governed by us right now to design and adhere to. They're complying with those requirements, the state requirements that we have to design to. Which at this point is rainfall calculation, which they're designing in accordance with.
Is there any way that you would be able to get information of what happened if it exceeded those data?
If, I'm, I'm guessing not totally.
We can, but again, I feel like we're back to that question of like, I think last meeting was sort of like, what if the floodplain maps aren't really real? Like, so if, if we have to use the governing guidance of the New York State assumptions of average rainfall, then that's what we have to.
It's the most strict guidance that we have.
And we know that especially, that if things change, then things have to change. If it doesn't work, then it doesn't work.
But if it's designed for this, I don't know, maybe this will be, could be discussed during another part of a review to look at what factors are in place to mitigate or.
Maybe Lance, you could just spend a few minutes explaining the stormwater pollution. And like, because we really haven't discussed it in detail, you know where it is, we know where it is. But I don't know.
Can we, I don't want to do that, but I don't want to bring causers to me.
And I also, this question has to do with impact on a water body, not general offflow.
Yeah, oh, so, so again, that might.
Very high, it has to do with.
Well, we'll come in later, so.
Yeah, and we have so much more to.
I understand that, but what I'm saying, you know, this question actually has to do with, you know, what is the water body that's impacted? Is it isolated or is it connected to a larger hydrogeological system? So general offflow is an erosion question, but this question is aiming at is what are, are there other downstream impacts to other water bodies? So is the erosion, in theory, going to leave this site and end up in the Chesapeake? In a local stream? In Keel Lake? Into whatever it's awful for, whatever it's shedding into wherever it's going. And to answer that question, you have to determine, well, is what they're doing to the change?
Right.
It, what's happening in any way? So if, if the, I have a, I have a site in another town where it's a slope off the major state highway that goes straight to a creek and it's part of the Six Mile Watership. And one of the questions was, well, it's horrible, all this stuff's going into the creek, unaffected, dirt, oil, grease, cinders, plowing materials, salts, all sorts of stuff is just washing straight off the state highway into the creek. And the developer was saying, yes, but when we put this site in and put in our stormwater and our herbs, we're actually going to stop the sheet flow off the state highways from going into the creek. You're going to have a better hydro geological situation here. You're going to have cleaner creeks than if we did nothing. So one of the ways they test water is if there's a downstream impact or erosion is what's the water quality, what's the turbidity, what are the Cessie discs showing, two feet, five feet, eight feet? So the question here is, is the area that's being disturbed left untreated? Or even if treated, is it affecting another water body downstream in terms of the water quality clarity, et cetera?
And our engineer, having assessed the firm, says no. And so we can get clear on the closed as people on the board and the zoning officer, but I think question I is still then, no.
Right, there's other questions you're going to get to that address some of this stuff, but just to be clear, that's not this particular question. This is about the impact on a water body.
Go into flood, impact on flooding.
Right.
So now I think we were on J, actually, before we had the backup to I. So the proposed action may involve the application of pesticides or herbicides in or around any water body. Um, and I think we actually said no or small because there isn't a water body and it's residential, yes? So K?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Finally. The proposed action may require construction of new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities.
Uh, right, and that is no or small because we got the report saying that the Chesapeake needs to mend the proposal, okay? L?
So L, because I believe in our previous go-rounds of the categorical areas, we identified no to the impact on flooding category, but we added the flooding as an option for this one under other categories, other impacts. So I put flooding and I put project may result in, this is the terminology that's used under the flooding title. Uh, flooding, a project may result in or require modification of existing drainage patterns and the project may change floodwaters that contribute to flooding. That's the, the language.
So again, I feel like that's something where the plan for how the mid-stormwater runoff is going to be mitigated gets answered by D E C. So then proposed by professionals, reviewed by professionals, D E C looks at it and says, this is not going to contribute floodwaters, or you say it will?
Right, I mean, well, floodwaters right now are really the wetland areas and they're minimizing the impact of that to the point where they, they're already covered by a permit. So they don't have to even gain another permit for that area. Number two, they're designing in the most strictest accordance with D E C standards, which is what we have to adhere to. They're designed to make sure they treat all runoff from the site that's hitting the impervious surface, getting collected and being funneled to a pond to store, which will prevent flooding of areas because it's, it's being rerouted, which is the drainage patterns, we're changing them. So it's being collected and rerouted to a new pond that holds the water back and then ultimately discharges them at a different time than what it was ultimately doing before.
Okay.
Redirecting the water and treating the water before it leaves the site at a lesser rate than what it currently is now.
Team, did this trigger anything?
The only thing I've noticed, not this, this rain, one we had prior to this one, which is also a terrible thing. South Street, the right side of it as you head west, is, holds a lot of water, as is right now.
Yeah, I watched, I wanted to watch you that night.
Uh, there's a long, long strip of stormy water there. So it's, the street is, well, the site is a little compromised. So I think we really have to be careful.
And I think it's like kind of you, like it's, it's, we can be clear on where it's going. Okay.
Well, I, I.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, I mean, I think I was the one that brought this up the last time, but I, I just really, I didn't feel like there was anywhere in here that was kind of addressing, a question that was addressing, um, not floodplains and not, you know, flooding to wetlands, but just flooding that kind of is occurring naturally in the area. The people have been just telling us anecdotally that they have really, really soggy, wet yards and this area is really, really wet. And this question says, will it require modification of existing drainage patterns? Yes, it will. Um, and maybe that's moderate impact, like not that necessarily is going to require. I, I think there needs to be some, somewhere where we address that.
So now I'm confused now because I feel like if, if it's not allowed to be any more runoff than currently is and the proposal will be, but I don't know that it would require extra modification. extra modification of existing drainage offsite.
I guess, I just don't really feel like there's a question in here, and I don't know if you, how you address this in site plan review, I guess, I just kind of want an acknowledgement from you all, like, this is a soggy area, and people are really concerned about it.
Right.
What, like, do you think that your drainage systems will improve the area?
Absolutely.
So we kind of have to, I mean, really, that's the.
Like you said, that it can get worse, but do you think that it will, like, will it actually be better?
It could, very well could be.
It won't get worse. I mean, definitions, but definition, standards require us to not, to hold it back.
And I get, I get that, and I get that it's not going to get worse, but like, it's bad now, do you want it to stay bad?
No, so experience shows us that putting in a system like this will actually, as Guy said with his other study where the guy was putting in stuff, it changes the flow because all, all of the development that's happened, remember, it happened before we had these rules in place. So the rules are extremely conservative, and they are designed to make you do more than what you just need for you because of those standards, the rain floods and all the concerned things.
I, I have to say that, I guess I want to know from, from both engineers, like, do you think this area will be in better condition after this project?
I mean, they're treating it in accordance with the highest standards that we are obligated to treat to. I don't have, there isn't another method I'm aware of to run its course.
Yeah, I think that's a question, probably, because if you have a design, and it's meeting those design requirements, but in terms of, you know, especially acknowledging since current designs might not be based on the best data and science, is that you're doing what's required by law, but is it going to be sufficient to handle what, the higher probabilities?
Yeah, so we have to take a moment to look back at what the D E C has done for the last 30 years, because there were, I've been doing development work for at least 25 years, and drainage is always an issue when you're developing, particularly in an older community where all the development happened without dealing with drainage. There are always flooding problems, because all that development happened and nobody dealt with the stormwater. Look around the developed area in the village of Trumanburg, how many stormwater ponds will you see?
A lot.
There's places in stormwater patterns, but there are not places where it was designed to hold the water and release it slowly, because we developed the land and now the water's got really.
Well, the thing that I've been thinking about is that we developed it independently, it wasn't a cohesive project, so, and where I walked, I walked South Street, the, actually just this past, and I watched the rain yesterday, right, it was raining a lot, and I walked, I went to walk around, watch mom and Tamara, put the dog in her bag, and it's wet, it's wet, wicked wet, but I, that wasn't one developer that looked at a whole lot and said, if there's so much freedom to build those houses within that, it was like, let's deal with it now, let's deal with it now, let's deal with it now, but looking at a cohesive land use, I feel, I feel, Hannah, thinking about this, I think, I think if they're saying as experts, and I'm looking at a large plot, developed in a way, a predictable way, because that, they're doing that, it's not piecemeal, it's not like Washington just built house by house, that we do sometimes, and I kind of just have to trust the state, the state's metrics, like, I'm not going to try to say that the science isn't good, I mean, I feel like that's a hard question for us to answer.
For those of us who've been doing it for a while, what we've seen is, over the years, the D E C has continually rationed up the requirements until they're now the most stringent they've ever been, and we are not seeing developments where the stormwater is not properly met. In fact, just about every development we work on, the stormwater is better afterwards because of what we did, because it's now all in control.
Okay, so Laura.
The, the thing I'm trying to get at with, Hannah, are you talking about, is this project going to solve some of the problems around the perimeter?
No, 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 I'm not, no, I recognize that you, that's not your, you know, your place, you don't need to be correcting the issues that already exist, I just want an acknowledgement that this problem exists.
Sure.
And I, yeah, I wanted to kind of touch base with the engineers, Will, do you honestly think that it will get better? And I think my answer is.
It's not that it won't get worse, it'll be the same.
I know that it won't get worse, I understand that.
Could be better.
But.
And what's the worst end?
I still think it's moderate impact, like, and it, you know, does that mean, like, I don't know what that means, I can't say that that's small impact, I'm still going to say that it's moderate.
But we don't have the moderate column to vote it.
Oh, we do.
We do.
Yeah.
Well, you want to, you want to add the addition of other impacts, that it might result in, or modification of existing drainage? You want to make that L a moderate? I'm confused, just even the wording of it is confusing.
I don't even know where you are.
Well, we're talking about the, the comment that we're addressing right now.
Top of page three.
No.
Top of page three, under, okay, I have to bump myself back up.
Oh, oh, John, look at the new one, it's got, let's see, he typed it up.
Okay, no wonder.
But that's actually, I mean, I feel like we put it there as a concern, so that we can address it.
And maybe be modified to, more specifically what you guys are saying.
And I did have a question, Hannah, related to your question, which is, so we said the D E C is going to continue to monitor the, the site and/or anyone, and in the future, you can go back and the person that signed the permit is on the hook because they built the ship. And, wait, no, wait, I'm going to finish my question though, because it's actually my, my question, which is, what if the landlords find that their basements are worse? And they can prove it, then the developer is on the hook.
Yeah, the process where they complain to the village, the village will do an inspection, and they will have to come over to the determination of how that occurred.
And if it's found that it is a result of this development, then the developer's on the hook.
Exactly.
Yeah, just checking.
There's a recent, one second, just, a recent incident which sort of takes the wind out of anybody's sails, but the parking lot from high school was graded and designed and supposed to go, I talked about this a few meetings ago, and it ended up in my carpenter's shed and on his property. So it was, in spite of all the dialogue about it and how well it was going to work.
And so then he's now in litigation with the.
I think they took care of it, and I think it got rechallenged or it was taken up to, but somebody had to do something, it didn't work, it absolutely did not. So these things, these are probably the things we have to look at, be more scrutiny than anything else.
Yeah.
Because it affects everybody around there.
You should.
And it's a problem already, so, you know, you're being sort of under the microscope on this one.
Okay, so we have to sort of do something now about F.
Now, which represents flooding and more defined, I think, change in drainage patterns?
Yeah, I mean, the question is, will it modify existing drainage?
What will be impacts from the modification? It's, it's not at all, again, you're not asking, will there be flooding? If it rains for 40 days, there's going to be flooding, and that particular lot is going to be the least of your worries.
I guess the most.
What worries more is, is this project going to produce an impact that is moderate or large? That's actually the question, so, all projects, if you're, if you're modifying the drainage pattern, the question is, what's the impact from that? And if there's an impact, is it humanity? Or is, is the harm of that impact going to avoid it? Is the neighbor allowing, whatever they did when they were, they run straight into, you know, Pulp Creek, or is this shed small and there's a burp body in it, or, you know, you can weigh that out however you want, but the question of, might there possibly be flooding, isn't the question that Seaver is asking, and isn't the question that I think you put in here? Because if you're going to say we're going to look at flooding, then reopen section five and the hundred year.
That, I mean, that would start with this question.
Right, but the question is not whether you're, I don't believe your question is whether you're altering drainage patterns, because you always put in a single family home, you'd alter drainage, the question is, does that alteration create a substantial non-mitigated impact? Or if there are moderate non-mitigated impact? Depending upon what the stormwater says and what the amount of alteration of the existing pattern is, you can alter the existing pattern and make it better, you can alter the existing pattern to make it work, that's sort of what you're trying to divine. So I don't know if the answer is, I don't have enough, Lance, to be honest.
I do, I mean, I do feel, I feel better having spoken.
Yeah, and I'm glad you raised that, because I feel better knowing there is actually recourse that's out, but I'm not, if you made a mistake.
If it fails, they have to fix it, that's what part of the annual MS4 reporting requirement is.
Great.
I mean, if, if you get too many cattails in the pond, or if you get something that, you know, that usually would shock, like muskrat, if there's a hole in it, you're not, you're not going to pretend like you should, then you got to go fix that every year.
Right, right. Okay, so can we, have got due diligence on this question, we can move?
I mean, I feel like I'm the one who's like.
Oh, right, sorry, I was still thinking, you're still.
And which one was this?
This is an added question, the new, the new September 27th, with, with the addition, right, that's what the date of September 27th, L, three feet, top of age. Okay, so that's no or small, then there's four and five, which we addressed in part one, or last week, not small prior, in part one. And then the next open question is?
Six. Wait, did we do six with five with flood?
Did I skip one?
You said no last week.
Yeah, I said no last month.
But when I was raising the issues on the water, then you said that would be dealt with in.
That was the whole point of that last discussion, so what you did was take those two flooding questions that we spent maybe 20 minutes on, move them up to three, that was the discussion we just had.
Okay, yeah.
Then you said no on everything up to the sixth.
So I just want to include, I guess, for the record, if you go to page six of the progress on water contamination, it's in table three for the hydrologic modeling results, the runoff volume and equated runoff increase for post-development for watershed number two.
Is that a wetland? Is watershed number two a wetland and then water retention ponds?
Water, watershed, they, they find the property of watersheds.
Yeah.
So there's a designated area, there's watershed number two, you have.
Yeah, is that part of retention?
Two A, two B, and two C.
Are those part of the retention ponds?
Uh, I don't think so.
Can anyone answer that just now?
Yeah, so I mean, all of your sub-areas, when we go from the field to the developed condition, you're initially, if you don't mitigate, if you don't put any ponds, they're going to show an increase in volume and an increase in runoff rates. But then after the point of analysis where we leave the site, that's where the ponds do their jobs of reducing that to either at existing or below existing runoff rates. So within each individual watershed, you, you will see an increase, you may see an increase, then we capture that to ponds, and then we slow it down, and then at the site.
So those are the numbers before the stormwater treatment is at right now.
Okay, so this is post-development of pretreatment?
Post-development, because you have to do that to know what you're treating for.
Right, all the volumes of the ponds are based on.
I thought that watershed two was on-site runoff, and was it going to be?
All watersheds are on-site. All, all watersheds are on-site.
No, the runoff is going on-site, and for that watershed.
Eventually.
Eventually, yes, right, so what, where water runs off right now, we keep it going in that same spot, but we have practices, we install upstream to slow it down and treat it before it goes to the safe water.
Just not see any calculations as to what sort of that mitigation that we have on that new rate.
Because the entire stormwater plant that M R B is reviewing, so it's.
Right, I mean, it's.
Because you, you have heard pretty different watersheds and runoff areas, you have different methods being used, so you have the head and dynamic separator along with the retention, so the bio-retention, and those are affecting particular areas where you have runoff, so the one would be over on the east side going through South Street, and that's where you have the primary kind of muscular mitigation being done. The stuff that's over, I believe watershed two, and some parts are over on the west side, and those are not going into any active treatment.
They are, they're going into a large instructed wetland extended retention pond that is on the southern central part of the site.
And then there's still got an offsite?
Yes, everything leaves the southeast corner of the site currently, a major watershed still leaves that point, and that's why we have a probably large impoundment, temporary impoundment to hold that water back and then see what happens with it.
So.
Okay, so, right, I don't, yeah, let's see, any reason to reopen, questions that we already addressed, moving on then, we come to 10.
Could we skip back to seven for a second?
Sure.
Just for a second? Okay, we didn't really have any background to talk about seven, and I've got some.
Plans and items, okay.
Yeah, we happen to have, I have a document here, quite interesting, three full pages, by somebody that has studied that site for birding for 50 years, and there are 54 bird species observed, studied, that eat there, that nest there, and attract there, and I will submit this list, all 54 different bird species, and a very passionate article about them.
Excellent. Are any of them undetected by the state as being, or the federal government's being rare, threatened, or at danger?
That I didn't have time to do, but from the 54 here, I'm sure there would be two of them.
It's really cool, but I think.
This is, this already part of the record or not?
No, it is now.
No, I just got.
Cool, okay. Great, so now around to 10.
Was it nine?
Did I skip one? I think nine was checked as now.
No, I'm sorry.
Impact on aesthetic resources.
It was, we, I had identified it as a.
Oh, I'm sorry?
No, no, I did, and the previous one will be all agreed through the review there, you changed. The location of what was the critical aesthetic resource was five miles away, couldn't see it from the site due to the vegetation around it, I thought that was the reason why we, we board identified that as a no.
Except for the camp.
No, we're not.
The camp house is ten.
Yeah. The camp house is ten.
I'll just, I apologize, the question was, was number nine impacting aesthetic resources, was that a yes or a no? Previous meeting, I had identified as a potential yes, because by definition, there's an aesthetic resource within a certain distance of our site. When the dialogue occurred on that, we discussed, I believe the board did, came to the conclusion that that was in fact a no, because that aesthetic resource that's a certain distance from the site is not visible or impacted by this project.
Which we will now also address in 10. As a historic and archaeological resource.
Correct, so in 10, impact on historic and archaeological resource, the flows action may occur in or adjacent to an historical archaeological resource. As we went through this, it was identifying that the project is located near an identified historic building, Erwin House, which is listed in the state or national register of historic places. The project is not identified within an archaeological sensitive area.
Okay.
I think Ben Shipp O. cleared this, yes.
So the applicant coordinated with Shipp O. to get, no, what would be considered a no impact on it, which is requiring both the D E C, when you have a SWIP, which they do, and ultimately as part of the environmental report for the project, and they provided us a no impact.
They started a presentation.
So, but I decided to go with all the questions, because I like our historic assets.
Yeah.
And so, I don't know, do you, do we want to do it, and D E C, but what, the one that concerned me was the visibility, and it's not. So it's not an archaeological site, I should go, right, but the historic site, sustainably, blah, blah, where's the question, we're talking about the visuals, if you can see it, then you can't, so you can't see it from camp house, you couldn't see this development, because there was a rising hill and a check with the landlord who verified that.
So the board's saying that because, because we identified this as a yes, under the title, impact on historic, archaeological resources, all A through D and then ultimately E are identified as a no or small impact? That would be.
I'm satisfied with that, but did all of them, did you find otherwise in your investigation? Okay. I'm just showing off that I love to do it. Okay.
It's correct.
Yes! Okay, where does that bring us next, friends?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Page eight.
It's your favorite! Okay.
Impact on transportation, the flows action may result in a change to existing transportation systems, we identified that as a yes. Item A, the project, the traffic increase may exceed the capacity of the existing road network.
So I might, I might address this for block of questions, I say that I reread the traffic study, I reread the letter from, is it E R D, am I confusing another project that I'm working on? Armin, okay.
Yeah, it's R V N.
Okay, and so we have three firms that say independently that it's not a moderate or large impact, so did anyone find anything to? So did anyone find anything through A, B, C, D, or F to show otherwise in the traffic studies or?
Well, I think the increases of traffic on South Street are fairly fundamental. Um, so you can find my notes on, um, transportation. Um, almost a 50% vehicle per day increase.
50%? So again, is, where did you find that determination?
Um, here, there, and other places, and the traffic study and local data projections. Yeah, 40 to 50%, given what the final number is of the earlier count of the day of vehicles per hour. So I thought that was a rather, you know, intense amount. Um, so I, for Pennsylvania, from 360 vehicles per day to 500, and for South Street, from 940 to possibly 1,0500. So I think that merits a little.
Okay, well then let's do each, let's do each one. So then 13A, projected traffic increase may exceed capacity of existing road network. Do we find any substantive evidence that that's the case?
Um, I'm a great believer in on-site observation versus counting things and dotulating, and I spend a fair amount of time out on the rotary bench at the intersection of South Street and Main Street having my evening cocktail. And, and I can say that there, there, okay, there is plenty of capacity on South Street.
Yeah, and not, again, none of the D P W and all these firms, no?
And the projections, the projections, I think, were like 50 cars in a, in the peak hour, uh, which is one per minute, uh, so.
Right, right. Um, and the capacity of a two-lane roadway is 1,700.
Yeah, per, per hour?
Per hour, yeah, per hour per lane.
Yeah, really, I, it seems to me that it's always a peak load issue, because the capacity of the roads is clearly, yeah, and, and I think that, that's the part of the expert stuff that, you know, is completely clear, that there will be times when there will be increased traffic.
Sure.
And then the question of that, um, is just a question of whether this, whether it will exceed the capacity of the road network. It would take a hell of a lot of additional capacity, more than double, to exceed the capacity, where you'd actually have to think about widening the road to make it usable.
You know, driving into Ithaca from Truantsburg, if you have to be there a certain hour, and I did it in my unwilling truck, Hank Jr., um, driving into Ithaca is a beast already. Uh, bumper to bumper, a 79 was just changed to a traffic sign, which now goes over.
It's great, actually, I love that.
Some people are obeying it, but they're starting to do the opposite. In other words, two, three cars speed through, and that last one goes right through, but that's, that's become a huge problem. The backup on both, and you know, we don't have a lot of jobs in Truantsburg, we will have people driving cars, and we're increasing the number fairly substantially, and I think this is a pretty serious question. And the fact that a village of the kind of intelligence that we do have here and could have here, we really should be looking at alternatives, especially if we're going to absorb large numbers of people coming here. There are no jobs here, there are very limited jobs, they will have to depend on going to other areas, and, you know, one person, her car, is precisely what Mother Nature is so upset about, why she's on the broomstick riding us in our rear end and telling us what she's gonna do. In other words, we're not thinking, ah, some planning board sometimes needs to look into the future a little more deeply than just, okay, here's some more cars with one person in the car. It's not an answer, um, not for any reason.
So.
We need something like. Like just the traffic. Oh, fair, um, is there like, is there a standard for, uh, what kind of perimeter do you consider this within? I mean, you know, this is what increases the traffic, you know, uh.
To be perfectly honest, this size of development normally would not even trigger a traffic study.
What?
Yeah, so again, we're assessing, she said it normally, this, this scale of development wouldn't trigger a traffic study. So if traffic studies were done, assessed by two or three people. But we're, but we're looking at the impact on the roadways, right? Is it gonna drastically change? So moderate to largely in change, or no to small change in the transportation systems? So, so will there be more cars on the road, or do you need to widen the road? Are you gonna do traffic lights? Are you gonna do all those things in three different engineering firms? I've said no mitigation is required.
I, I cannot agree with you.
Well, so that's sort of like hard, I mean, how do you, we're just gonna sort of emotionally disagree with the, with the firms?
Not emotionally, but it, you know, this is, um, we still don't have final numbers on the amount of cars that will be at the site, we still don't have the final numbers.
I think we measured the top most amount.
How many people are dropping their children off, picking them up? We don't know that yet.
That was after it, that was after it in the traffic study.
All parts of the study.
Yeah, it's, it's included in the appendix, this is all of the coverage.
But it's, isn't it more speculative based on even something?
No.
No, and the, the traffic study erred on the side of being conservative and took the worst-case numbers.
Yeah.
And assumed that everyone would be driving and dropping their children off for the nursery school, and the residents of the apartments would be driving their cars to and from work during the peak hours, which may or may not be true. So it really errors on the side of being conservative and overestimating the traffic impact.
But how is that possible in Truantsburg? When it just, it's, it seems an application from a larger city to me, a formula you would use in, in a larger city. I don't see how it works.
Well, I've been working, I've been doing traffic engineering for over 23 years, all over upstate New York.
Yeah.
In every size city, village, town, everywhere, and, you know, we've done post-development studies on sites like this, and 95% of the time, we overestimate the traffic impact.
Right, so we talked earlier about how the D C is very conservative on the stormwater stuff, uh, the traffic analysis is 10 times more conservative than the stormwater approach, because they actually make you, make you do a long-term view and add traffic, quote-unquote, background traffic every year. You have to assume traffic gets worse every year as you're looking at your impacts, and 10 years out, assuming traffic increases across the village, we still have no actual impact and no mitigation required at any intersection. Um, I, I know, I know we had this discussion, I know you feel like this is a really big project.
I don't.
And in Truantsburg, historically, it is, um, but in the grand scheme of things, of the types of projects this group typically works on, M R V, this is a very small project, and you would not do a traffic study for this project. But you said traffic was a significant concern, so obviously.
But for a small village, this is a very significant increase.
I'm, I'm saying, we do projects in small villages all the time, and the laws are not, or the rules are not different in a small village. An intersection is an intersection, it's got a traffic control device, and there are certain assumptions, very conservative assumptions, that need to be plugged in to do that traffic impact analysis.
Yeah.
And I'm just saying, to the extent we have said there's a traffic impact analysis, as Amy's pointing out, we have probably wrong, it's probably far less than what we projected.
Right.
But we use very conservative numbers and very conservative approaches, and the roads are the roads, they have the capacity they have.
And I understand.
And I just, you know, I, part of the way I think about this too, is, okay, what happens? Let's say we decide, okay, yeah, moderate, large impact. Um, and we, and then we end up saying, based on that, that we're gonna make a positive operation on issued traffic. Uh, and we're gonna put a microscope to it then, and that's what, that's what an E I S would have us do. Um, and is the microscope gonna provide us enough more magnification than we've already applied through the studies with the review by M R V of the study that was done through John's onsite?
Through the third firm, through the third firm that reviewed our piece.
Absor- observations. By doing that, is that gonna really change the, you know, the conclusion that, that we reach on this or not?
No, I think it's a larger issue, that's, I think that's precisely the point. We are still dealing with more cars in Truantsburg.
A larger issue that experts can't.
Uh, right, because our future of how we transport ourselves is ridiculous, the way we do it today.
I do, I do have to say, can I add something? I, I do feel like this development proposed site is pretty close to a bus stop. Like, if there were something that we would want, you know, some mitigation measure that we're looking for to, you know, have fewer cars on the road, that would be one thing that we'd be looking for, is a, is a site that is close to a bus stop. And perhaps one of the things that we could look into is like, this is a fairly large development, might there be a bus stop in the development?
Yeah.
But I don't think that's.
I think that's absolutely a step in the right direction.
But that's not, that's not part of the question. Wait, oh, wait, that's, don't please.
Uh, well, I would add to that too, that it's, it's within, it's within walking distance of downtown, it's within walking distance of the schools, and the schools will not need to use a school bus to access the site. So I, I think there are a number of things that make this desirable.
I would like to ask one question. Um, can you refresh my memory on the sidewalk situation? There will be sidewalk added, please, where?
So the sidewalk now, we just drove past, is, the sidewalk now, we just passed the site.
Yeah, it does, it extends past. Yeah, it goes all the way to the.
That's south, we will look into that sidewalk. But we will build, that park we talked about, it's about a mile, the trails throughout the site will connect right into that sidewalk.
And all of your roads will have sidewalks?
Uh, yes, all of my roads have sidewalks.
Yeah, I think there's, I think sidewalk, I mean, just to be clear.
Yes, please, you've looked at those.
The internal, the, the 40-some idea, not like the sidewalk all around it, or it just ultimately connects to two sidewalks that exit the site of both locations, or then there is a trail network that connects the perimeter projects, the perimeter individual houses, with, with a mechanism of walking. There isn't necessarily a sidewalk, I don't believe, on some of those single-family homes that extend beyond the limits of the home, from the parking area to the house. I don't know if there's a perimeter sidewalk there. It's almost an internal, and then often it's connected to all the external trail locations.
So I, I think that, um, are we, are we gonna acknowledge that some more streets might feel like some of our current streets do when, when school comes, that don't feel it the same way now? Yeah, if, if the traffic is during school time or the traffic, if we can feel that there's, there could be, if this doesn't happen, more cars? Yes, but has anyone anywhere with all their data and their scientific exploration said that it's, um, more than a no or small impact now? So I think it would be not defensible in a court of law to say, we personally, as a planning board, think it is a moderate to large impact, even though all the data we've been presented says it's not.
I would go with moderate.
Okay. Okay, so what about the rest, the rest of the team at the quarter of nine, not to rush anything, but not to be the dead horse, where, um, can, can we mark the no to small and move this? Is there anyone else who has a?
No to small. You go with a little small.
No, I, I wish there was a small or a small. Okay, um, so then, that makes the whole thing, on impact on transportation, is it, uh, it's not a no, with a do, with a no, and I think that when it comes to site plan review, and you're looking at the roadways, and you're looking at all of that, there's a chance to say more about this topic, but, um, unless I'm saying anything, but anyone over here thinks, thinks I'm stuck in the box.
Well, yeah, as part of the site, I mean, as part of the site plan approval process, if there is mitigation measures, like intervention by stops or other things that you feel would be more, um, of, I don't know the term I'm looking for here, but if it would help, uh, the possibility of limiting traffic through site plan review when we get to that spot, most certainly, uh, parking spaces and, um, bus stops.
Okay.
Can you clarify, excuse me?
So we just made, uh, 13 was impact on transportation, yes, is now being checked as a no.
You changed all things no, because there is no exact.
Correct, there is not a moderate or large, but we're not gonna take public comments.
And there's no indication of present pattern of movement of people.
So we're here now.
Or in the neighborhood, so you checked.
No or small.
No or small, right, not acknowledging any change.
Wait, I'm, I'm sorry.
It's, it's, do you, but what if everyone followed, wanted to take over all of this poll? What if everyone wanted to say every single thing that is important to them at this time in this process?
I'm following all of this process.
So the process is, so I'll clarify, you can sit for a second, because I understand your question clearly. I understand that you really wish that we thought all of that was moderate to large to no. But what you just decided as a ward is that number 13, impact? Because I got hijacked for the record, you hijacked our process, so I, I got over here first. Number 13, impact on transportation, was originally checked as a yes, so that we all spent the last three weeks investigating these questions, reading everything deeper in recognition that we needed to take a closer look. We have now determined, um, that it is a no. It is not something that we trigger C D R to say yes and keep it there. Thank you. Okay, and so now we have 14 though, which is checked as a yes, and more questions to review.
Impact on energy, the proposed action may cause an increase in use of any form of energy. Originally, I had this identified as a no, but there's further discussion last month due to the natural increase of lighting and apartment usage, it's identified by the board that it should be a yes. Um, so moving on, at the end of May, both action will require review or an upgrade from the existing or substation. As a result of this project, R T D, N I S, and utility providers do not create a new substation to, um, to provide this, this project.
Okay. Um, right, anyone argue that the substation is actually somewhere in the plan, maybe we see it? Okay, so no to small on 14A.
On B, the proposed action will require the creation or extension of an energy transmission or supply system to serve more than 50 single or two-family residents, or to serve in commercial or industrial use. They're not creating an extension or conversion any to serve the site.
So no to small on 14B?
C, proposed action may utilize more than 2,500 megawatts per, uh, megawatts, excuse the word, hours per of year of electricity, which is a lot.
Which is a lot, so we had some clarification on that, I think Lance earlier, and the, um, right, it's not, so.
Terms of the usage, correct?
The usage. 14C is a no or small?
D, the proposed action may involve heating and or cooling of more than 100,000 square feet of building area when completed.
No, small, not on the warehouses requiring air conditioning.
Why, why did we go to a yes?
I think the discussion was, there needed to be talk of, um, energy efficiency, and so there, we did.
Alternate energy.
Yeah, we did reference a little bit, but I'm happy to take a moment. So in our original submittal, um, as part of our attachment to part one of the E A F, we did a narrative on a bunch of issues, including energy. There's about an eight and a half of narrative or information on the energy efficiency that we are proposing relative to the system. It's sitting over there, I'm happy to dig that out if you want to go through it, or you can just look at it at some point, but that was really, I think, the, the reason you wanted to make sure we discussed that.
We should hear this, Mark.
Great.
Yeah. All right.
We were addressing the site plan review, that it exists, that it's a big project, and we have lots of questions, that's all this has to do with it. Anyone wants to?
I agree. Okay, so the narrative, just summarizing quickly, the project acknowledges the project will certainly result in an increase in energy usage. Existing lines of the site, no, no extension of transmission lines. Um, a number of, uh, programs are proposed to minimize the use of, of energy throughout the life of the project, including modern light equipment, efficient heating, ventilation, air conditioning systems. Um, there's a discussion of the Topkins County Energy Roadmap as a tool to reduce energy use and help transition renewables, and the project plan, the plans, the project plans to follow the recommendations of the five elements of that plan. of the five elements, uh, of that plan. And, uh, there are, um, seven specific items that are called out. So water fixtures will meet U P A's water sensor requirements. Permanent appliances will be energy star rated. Um, I N H S is exploring use of heat pumps as an alternative to gas, including discussion with heat smart Tompkins. Um, where do those stand? Got any more discussion? Um, the roofs of the apartment buildings will be suitable for solar, as will some of the townhomes. Uh, the building envelopes will be insulated to R twenty-five dash R thirty-four to achieve energy savings significantly greater than code requires.
This, that, no, sorry, making it up with the last one.
Okay. All new construction is either LEED or Enterprise Greenery Criteria certified. Um, I N H S will install occupancy sensors and L E D lighting where appropriate. All outdoor lights will be on photo cells. I N H will install, uh, high efficiency heating and cooling systems. Equipment will be, will be located in utility closets rather than at attics or basements. And I N, I N H S will work with the energy modeling firm to employ whole building energy modeling in order to optimize building energy performance. Um, all I N H S buildings are designed with E certification and indoor air plus certification, as well as water sensor certification. So those are just the host of programs that I N H S recommended to reduce the footprint to, I mean, I need these developments.
Now, LEED has different, uh, levels of certification. Just LEED certification.
Is it just the basic?
We haven't, we haven't gotten far enough along in our design to really, really determine what level we'd be going for. But we could certainly get into that more in site plan review.
I did read something in, I'm almost gone, wouldn't, but I did, uh, read something in there that I appreciated, which is that the building materials have changed to something, something John Alberg and I talked about yesterday and that the building materials proposed for some of the residences are the new past.
That's all cement, cement.
Yes, cementitious and they're heavily recycled. They do not, because one of my, you know, major offsets from Mother Nature was again that her dump a full and only once any material stayed on the roof for it. So using, that's a good building material, it's long lasting. And when it doesn't, it can be crushed to become part of the roof format. And I hope the same, something similar will come up against pressure treated, which is still kind of toxic. And it doesn't last long in climate change for any planet.
Okay, so thank you for the energy summary. Uh, we had fourteen, impact on energy was previously checked as a yes. Are we now ready to say that that is a no? Somebody else's voice that mine great?
Fourteen
Okay, fifteen is a yes. Uh, this is the impact on noise, odor, and light. And I remember that we were sort of guided, Lance, right? That a lot of this is about construction time, which we identified earlier as a point that we're concerned about. Um, so Yeah, okay. Go for it.
Uh, A, the action may produce sound above noise levels established by a local regulation. So, uh, during construction, will sound or noise or odors produce noise above, not sound or noise, excuse me, sound, produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation? Or any time after the project's been established? Because they have to be just during construction. But I think you'll see most of these impacts are more likely to occur temporarily during construction as opposed to permanently after construction.
So having, uh, once run in the village, a, uh, music hall that was often cited for a decibel level that happened down with the village code is ninety decibels. Um, and I did a review of, uh, several sites that listed what the average decibel levels are of construction equipment to say, you know, is it above established local regulation? Let's actually look at that. And so, um, I found actually some interesting things and I don't want to bore everybody who knows it, um, what's going on. But so a chop saw and screw guns, those are all like eighty, eighty-five, um, if you're right next to them. Um, a dump truck is eighty, so I was surprised. I actually thought that that would be louder, it's a ladder and it's not. The backhoes and bulldozers are, so earth movers tend to be ninety-four, decibels at ten feet, but at seventy feet, they're like eighty-two. So again, I was thinking about that, are these super, super loud? I'm thinking about jackhammers and all those things. A lawnmower, ninety decibels, this conversation, sixty. So just some parameters that I looked at to see is it's within keeping? And then I looked at that hours of operation, um, and so, because that was the thing. So we couldn't be louder at the wrong though, after nine because of the, the village ordinance. So the village ordinance says seven to nine. And the proposed construction, um, is not during that time. But it is, it's rates proposed to be, uh, Monday through Friday, seven to seven, and Saturday is eight thirty to five. And so Saturdays were a consideration and I sort of fell back on the lawnmower. Again, on Wick Street, um, you hear, and there's no, they can do it anytime, right? You hear noise, so I don't know, that's just what's going on in my head.
Uh, garbage trucks that come through the village and run north use jade brading, which I brought up on this board.
Which they're not supposed to.
Which they're not supposed to. It is the loudest sound I've ever heard. And I live quite a distance away from ninety-six. And it is, I mean, we, I've called, uh, I don't know who else to call, but I've complained about it many, many times. I actually should, Rick and Gom now here, whack it and see what ninety actually means.
I might be able to, Admiral, work for comments in the incident level, you know, if you want.
Get some idea.
Um, in, in this country, we have a problem because the equipment is, uh, maybe, uh, pretty far behind in terms of noise control.
Yeah.
So a lot of it, you could either work with groups, test applications on the contractor, uh, construction requirements and monitoring.
Like if they had to
Depending on what the goal is having during construction. Um, however, without that, um, I would say fairly that yes, you would see the ninety decibels.
Yeah, during, are, are there any constructions and sites that don't?
No, no.
So, I mean, if there's
Depends on the type of equipment you're using, again, because there have, like, there are, uh, equipment that's posted out there that you can get that is a lot required, which is not used in this country.
I mean, I'm tempted, it's, it's temporary, it is construction, there will be noise, there will be disturbance, but it's a temporary. I know, so what do you think that no, small, or moderate to large on the, on A?
Uh, I think it's a small.
Small match, okay.
Am I on this?
Large, small match, I think it
At least for, what, what kinds of things will be done with it?
Uh, generally, you can do aftermarket, but a lot of the effective stuff is done in the actual production. So depends where you're getting your equipment from, different lawnmower systems. Um, uh, it depends on the kind of work you're doing, so what's the substrate that you're working on? Um, but a lot of it has to do with the quality of the equipment you get and how it's maintained.
Isn't the best mitigation distance?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was the thing that I was looking at, the second need and that it's in the, so of course there's going to be, but is it above local regulated regulations? So I don't know.
Goes back to what regulation would be and, 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 again, it depends who is exposed. Um, if you're looking at the community, you'd say, where's the construction? If you have, let's say, a, um, buffer area where all constructions wouldn't be a certain distance away from any public areas or, or neighbors. Uh, but a lot of times when, for instance, when we were doing monitoring, uh, we would be required to go to any potential, uh, impacted neighbor. So we would do our monitoring inside the homes of people adjacent.
Yeah, and I think too that there's, there's also in the village noise order and ordinance, um, three point five, it's about, uh, noise, um, other than, you know, construction and erection, other than between seven and nine. So it's almost allow, like, construction can happen between seven and nine, it's gonna be loud. So it's, it's a, so I don't know, I guess I still, I just talked myself into the no or small and that it's something that I don't know what we can add. And gee, we really hope they use better equipment. I don't know if that's something you can add.
Or a temporary, um, area of construction that's somewhat isolated and somewhat insulated on the site.
The other thing to think about
Be somewhat removed from all push.
But if you look at this in, in a realistic sense, I mean, the contractor's gonna have to do, uh, worker controls too. So unless they're putting everyone in high levels of personal protective equipment and putting everyone under a, um, you know, hearing conservation program, which is very expensive, they're going to be taking actions to mitigate those sounds.
Yeah, okay. Just try to look at it.
Yeah.
Okay, so I feel like that's fifteen A is no or small. Okay, and then, um, B?
Proposed action may result in blasting within one thousand five hundred feet of any residence, hospital, school, licensed daycare center. Are nursing homes, being that this project does not pose any blasting? I don't think that's, you know, we don't.
Okay, no or small, fifteen B, C?
Proposed action may result in routine orders for more than one hour per day. Typically, you can see that with a wastewater treatment project, sewer project, and a civil construction project like this.
Except for paving.
Good.
Of course, yeah. Um, but that's a, yeah, okay, so no or small on fifteen C, okay? D?
Proposed action may result in light shining onto adjacent properties. Adjacent properties.
That, that's an area that I'm particularly interested in. And this document really is pretty thin when it comes to, to lighting.
We do, I can, I can You're talking about the memo, about the metrics part?
Okay.
It's in the last middle and
I can, I can tell you what we're looking at and then explain how they're handling it. So ultimately, they're not allowed to have light that trespass the property created in point five foot handle. So any light that's on the property, they're gonna give you a photometric to show us how far out that light will get out. Uh, and only incidents where you see a light near property lines, for the most part, is at entrance points, where you have an interact or intersection. Um, second part we're looking at, all light should be dark sky compliant, which is a certification that's given by the state in the federal amendment that says how light is going to be of a certain height. Um, also, all light should be flush, meaning that it doesn't stick below, the light is actually above, so that all light only shines downward, it's supposed to outward and up. So those are the things that we're looking for and ultimately they're, they're trying to comply with.
And there is a photometric part in that?
Okay.
Um, yeah. And, um, a couple of things, uh, again, uh, great, deliberate, direct observations. And, uh, I don't know how one decides whether, uh, I presume you're going for five foot handles or something like that. But, but, I would like to be able to compare what is being proposed for this project to what we're familiar with here. Um, I, I think we've had a lot of blowback that Main Street is overlighted. Um, and I don't know what level that is, but, um, I would hope that in this proposal, uh, that, that there's a more moderated level of lighting. I'm also interested, I don't know whether you're talking about metal daylight or L E Ds or
That's enough, I thought I'd get it. Because I had all those same questions and I was sort of thinking about construction time, but also not, and because, because the hours of construction are limited, that I wasn't, you know, other sites that we see where giant things are being put up and, or road construction at night on the interstate when I, I was done. So none of that is, uh, and then I looked at the streetlights because Main Street is really bright, over bright, and I actually asked Laura to look and see if she can find
Some information here, we should get more
Photometrics of those main streetlights. And the small thing that we came up, that's, looks like the last thing that they were determining was would be between fifty and a hundred watts. And I feel like definitely more than fifty watts. The photometrics in there for the twenty poles that are going all around is seventy. So that was where I started to look in terms of how it felt like, um, yeah, because Main Street is.
And was D O T responsible for the intensity of the lights we have?
I don't think so, I think the village chose it as part of the project, but I think
The village chose the intensity of those
Shows those fixtures.
The two hundred watt metal daylight.
Oh, yeah.
And twelve feet.
Yeah. Yeah, they're in
I don't know if that's what was actually installed.
So that's what we have to find and I didn't have, I actually thought it was a little too late for both of us to go with the bottom lever. I'd also like to compare it to what is on Wick Street because that sucker shines real bright in my, in my window. So as a, and it's a difference, it's real, it's not a teardrop proposal. But again, like John said, what are we dealing with now? Is it functional, what's proposed?
We would expect that's part of, when we get to site plan review, we're gonna spend a lot of time talking about lighting and what's there.
And we have no chance to say that doesn't work. So right now, the overall environmental impact is already something that's proposed far less than Main Street is.
Okay, I have a question. Um, are there state regulations or are there any regulations about how much lighting you need to have?
Or must have?
It's, it tends to be zoning and village specific.
There are not any statewide?
I don't know, are there any road standards for lighting? I don't think so.
With the safety or, yeah.
Just, I mean, typically you'll put a light at an intersection just to light up the intersections so that drivers are aware that there's an intersection there, especially if you have pedestrians. But other than that, there's
I was just, I mean, I guess I'm asking to know if, like, is this a For safety centers, yeah. Or do they have to be there? They don't have to be there.
Right, this is all site plan review and if you don't like it, you say, don't do it.
But general, you know, general public planning though, Hannah, I would say, and campuses?
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not
No, no, I'm thinking about it, like, some lighting is
I was just, I was
You have a lot of discretion in lighting.
No, I'm not trying to say that we shouldn't have it.
We're not, we're not
It needed to have, if these personal lighting was
Requires something. Yeah, that's right.
The name of the project.
So guys bring up a good point, so sort of build, building lighting, like over doorways, exit side, some of those things are absolutely required by the building code.
Right, right, thank you.
And there's some lighting that's mandated for accessible parking.
Okay.
Accessible.
Any jokes?
And there's some pedestrian safety under Ashdod standards, that's what that is.
Okay, I guess that's what I'm wanting, yeah.
That is represented, but not mandated. You, I mean, if you judge it based on a particular site, of course. It's next to a elementary school, I just hope you think, well, you would be appropriate. If it's in the middle of the Arizona desert, I hope you think it's inappropriate. But that's what we look at.
Okay. Um, so then I think, right, so we are now
What's on D?
D, fifteen D is no to small. Um, E?
The proposed action may result in lighting creating a sky globe brighter than the existing area conditions.
And you're, address that Lance by noting this, this dark sky regulations the L E D, the downward lighting.
Full shielded downward lighting.
Um, where, thank God, one, and, uh, okay. Um, okay, so that's no to small on fifteen E. Uh, sixteen?
Uh, impact on human health, so this was identified as a yes for the reason being that the project is located within fifteen hundred feet of the Tribuneburg Central School District. The proposed, the statement says that the proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. Um, this project doesn't have any contaminants, I'm worried that would be of human health concern, um, which is really where it's geared towards. Um, so I'm not sure if this is a yes or no, but it's up to the board to
Cement, I assume, will be brought in cement trucks, pre-mixed, ready, and poured, should not dry mixed on the site, so you won't have
And then will be stored or any other chemicals on site that would be of a contaminant or exposure concern.
And, well, uh, the, the caspian, that is a contaminant. That's one time that maybe there should be some warnings, do not walk beside or, or hang around there. Because that is pretty bad stuff. And it takes a while to cure, it doesn't cure fast.
Um, yeah, I did, in looking at this question, find any detail of, um, did anybody else on the, making? No. So then I think that that makes sixteen, impact on human health, move from a yes to a no. Has a whole field. Okay. So you're going to go with juicy. Well, then juicy questions?
All right. Seventeen, consistency with the plans. The proposed action is not consistent with the adopted land use plan. We identified those as a yes. Um, and then I may, proposed actions, land use performance may be different from or in sharp contrast to current surrounding land use patterns.
So I think that's no or small. Anybody want to add? That it's small, because I think it is in keeping with the land use components and the surrounding patterns.
If you're saying, seventeen A?
Yeah, pending site plan review, where specific architectural design components really get addressed. So to me, guys, this is feeling like seventeen and eighteen are stepping a little bit into this burly dovetail area, where you have a direct environmental impact, and looking at comprehensive plan, where the overlapping is coming in with site plan review, and it complements each other.
And you, yeah, like, to, 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 you said it's consistent, so are you considering the surrounding land use pattern to include the juniper manor?
I am.
Okay, I think that's a key factor that should be...
I know, yeah.
Large facility already out in the general area, it does depend on how you define the general area, right? Or current land, surrounding land use pattern.
All the other areas are certainly totally not in complement with this type of development. We have that one project, Juniper Manor.
Juniper one and Juniper two.
Yes, then the lower one, one road down, but I don't see how the rest with A works in complement.
Yeah, we all do.
So are you considering school, too?
Okay, let's consider the school.
I mean, that's a big, my, that's...
I guess I'm also largely considering the, so it's the Main Street, so Main, we, we, we live, see, this is a juicy one, right? So we look at, we look at a comprehensive plan, and when we looked at zoning review, right on the committee, and you're like, okay, what does Trumanburg look like? Are there districts, are there areas, and we found that, wow, Main Street is row houses, townhouses, apartments, really close to each other, brick houses like that, I'm using the wrong term, but, really dense. And then, and then as you get out, it gets less dense. So this is not that far from Main Street, it's walkable to school, so within, you don't need to bust, and you are near two other existing large structures, including a giant campus for school. So it's not a tiny little rural area that you're plopping a larger thing in, it's the first of its kind.
Huge difference, however, is when you describe our downtown buildings, they are of an architectural time and integrity, that they're visually captivating and stay that way day and night. Which puts them in entirely different perspective.
And brings us to site plan review, where we get to say all those things in...
But I'm a little afraid for skipping this and leaving it until the last second, because I think, you know, it's, these are the two biggest questions for us in this community. From everything we have seen in the comprehensive plan and community character, I think this, this is, you know, the two things we have to discuss. And just because we have, you know, school system is, is used differently, and I live very close to it, and at night, it tends to calm down, of course, it has vents and so forth, but this is a different type of place, this is twenty-four seven. Burn dairy, we requested, not I, because people live much closer to it, but they, the dim lights, and not play the loud music all night, well, that never happened, and they live, so bright lights are on all night, and the music is on. So every time something comes in where there is not enough review or dialogue, it tends to drift into a direction that people then end up very unhappy with. So most of Trumanburg is, you know, the reason we all moved here, and it is for its particular character. Landscaping, the sizes of some of your gardens, the lawns, the houses, the architecture, quiet at night, peaceful. And this, in that sense, I can't answer these any other way than this is, yeah, exactly.
I would like to say, this question says, is it in sharp contrast to the surrounding land use? It's all residential, like, even though Main Street may be a slightly different kind of residential, maybe Juniper Manor is a different kind of residential, it's all residential, it is not in sharp contrast. It's like, A, it's, that's my thing, to this particular...
I actually just wanted to do the zoning here. It's my option, it would be, well, I really am a zoning house. So I look at this in terms of the current comprehensive plan, but more specifically, the zoning ordinance, and in that sense, it does fit in, in terms of some of the descriptions of the kinds of housing affordability, and what you want to promote in terms of promoting new housing construction that is in harmony with the existing neighborhoods, but that definitely that provides that kind of opportunity for people to, to live in the neighborhood. And specifically in zoning and sections, we go to section three oh eight with affordable housing provisions, there are several areas there that you look to, that would support this.
One of, one of the things that, I've, I've spent a lot of time sort of comparing this proposed development to what exists at Tamarack and Larchmont, and there, I mean, other than the fact that Larchmont houses go for four hundred thousand dollars, there's a lot of similarity in terms of lot sizes, in terms of density, they're all single family, but other than that, there, there's, there's a lot of consistency in there with what is being proposed.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I, and I would, I would also, I would also say you're saying that.
He's not saying it's the same, he's saying there's similarities.
I'm, I'm saying that in terms of density, in terms of numbers of buildings per acre, there are, on this site, they're proposing nineteen buildings? Nineteen buildings, Larchmont, Tamarack, on twenty-eight acres, has forty plots. And if you overlay a, a twenty acre, which is what this site is, on the Larchmont, you get about twenty-six plots on that twenty acres. So there, there, there is a, I mean, there's a...
Similarity, yeah.
Now, the other thing, on the, on the Juniper Manor piece, one of the things I would suggest about that is that the, this plan has twenty, twenty units, approximately twenty units per building, whereas Juniper Manor has about thirty per unit, so this, this is actually smaller than, than Juniper one and Juniper two. So that's my two cents.
Which, six cents, yeah?
You know, we, we have a much more stringent review plan for this through our, the leaker of the seeker, I hate to say, but our work, that we should take a careful look at in conjunction with this, because it has even slightly stricter sort of observations on it.
I think it really comes down to, you know, what you consider to be the surrounding land, and how far out you're willing to sort of extend. You know, if you look at it, it's just this sort of, you know, yes, it's in the, you know, residential zoning district, and it, you know, meets technical requirements there, but if you look at that sort of micro community, there, it's bounded by South Street and Pennsylvania Avenue, and by, I don't know what that property is, on the north side, and, and then open land on the south side, or undeveloped, it's, it's on the south side before you hit the Tamarack, Larchmont. You know, it is a sharp contrast to that, in terms of its density, and, you know, just the, the kind of buildings that are there. But you don't have to extend very far before it quickly becomes not, not, or in sharp contrast. Because, I mean, you know, you look at an aerial photograph, and the most striking thing about that part of Trumanburg is the school. You know, I mean, it is gigantic, and is in no way consistent with current surrounding land use, that, this is...
They don't come out with that for you.
Right, no, yeah, but, but it's, if you consider that part of the...
And how that feels.
And is it part of the neighborhood?
Definitely.
Juniper Manor is the other one, you know, and John makes a good point about that, you know, the minute you extend out, you start seeing different kinds of construction, and, you know, some of the, some of the same kind of density. All that to say is that, you know, at least as our current zoning law seems to be constructed, they aren't really looking at micro communities, you know, they're really at large slots, and sort of categorizing all the things.
I would kind of speak to sort of looking at this from a higher point of view, you're going to have trade-offs, and if we strictly stick with what's been done since, let's say, post-World War II, and, you know, every person has their, their people, or, you're going to be in contrast, you're, you're not going to be doing things in a very environmentally sustainable way. So if we're trying to keep with the, the fuel...
Well, and with the comprehensive plan.
Right, comprehensive plan, and, but also be progressive in terms of using good soil water management, preserving as much habitat as possible, and yet still keeping those nice kind of properties, yeah, zoning has to change to really accommodate the, the new world, and we have to catch up with that. But, you know, I think there's a way to get all of that done, and be progressive, and still not be, not have a harsh and kind of negative contrast with what's existing here.
Yeah, and so, you know, I think where I come down is, I favor looking at it from a larger perspective, and when I do that, I find, you know, let's say, it has an impact, it's not a no impact situation, for sure. In the grand scheme of Trumanburg Village, or even think of it as the south side of Trumanburg Village, you know, I can't say that, that it's a sharp contrast.
This is somewhat of an aside, I'll try to keep it brief, but John Wordes, who's the town historian, has been doing a study on the Pease Street development, which is a very interesting study. Pease owned twenty-two acres between Ellen Street and Paulsy and Hector, in that area. And in the eighteen nineties, he decided he was going to do what is essentially an affordable housing development, so that he could serve the great ironworks, workers, and parceled up that twenty-two acres, and added the roads, Pease Street and Academy and Gray. And eventually sold sixty lots on those twenty-two acres, and including Juniper Manor.
Right, which was put in after, right, so it's sort of, which makes me feel a lot like this box structure, and the type of structures existed, and then Juniper Manor.
Right.
All righty then.
I think what Laura just said was very interesting, and, and that is that we have to view our role, our habitats, and how we are on this planet, of course, differently than we did in nineteen thirty-eight, or whatever. Who we are and how we live has to radically change, that order is up, of course. And I think there's a lot going on in building, sizes of buildings, how we inhabit them, and how they're built, it's changing very rapidly, responding to some of the dilemmas that we're seeing locally, and that we can see locally. So this thing of going, you know, of course, we can't, you know, who wants to live in the villages of the past, you know, with seventeen bathrooms? Those times are gone, and the service are gone, and we live a very different lifestyle, but I'd like to see us advance into that different lifestyle quicker than what we're doing.
So one thing that he did at the end is, again, reminding us that we, we can talk about insight, and what that looks like, what that feels like, how those spaces are used more specifically, but I think that none of the original plan that was a lot more like the game of life and the cookie cutter land, right, and then we went, I was like, hey, man, what's up with the green space in there? That's not great, I mean, I had concerns about trees and all that, and then they pulled it in, and so the, the change is, population density is great use of land. Keeping people as close as they can come together with each other is a good use of land, it's how we're gonna build cities, our city, cities.
Downtown, not in, in any way, but I think that's the opposite.
To me, this is maybe good mod, modern practices, and I was pleased to see that some of these recent middle be more, now, could be even more maybe, I don't know, but that's all we're looking at, because right next to it, it certainly isn't. Right next to it are people who really enjoy their shared private space, and that's real for them. So this has some of both, is what I'm feeling like, it's got really considerate cohabitation, and it's got opportunity for large blocks, from what I'm hearing speaking.
I didn't bring my, the road drawings, I wish we had some enough space here, we'd be, we're gonna take care of that, I forget, we need some, we need to be able to pin up drawings and, and see our village, and sort of talk in terms of actually recognizing things. So, just tell me one last time, site plan review will give us yet another, in-depth, opportunity to evaluate and look at elevations, design, the large building, the entrances to it. Another thing that alarmed me a little bit, four cars parked in, in one parking lot, how's that gonna work? And that's there for several buildings, how is that gonna work, everybody, push a button?
Let's push that question, so, so, okay, so here we are, seventeen A. I feel like we have tremendous prepared, we're thinking about this, this is not an easy thing for anyone to answer, it seems like no or small, in terms of the environmental impact of this for our community, we are not putting it in a strip mall where one wouldn't exist, right, it's not a sharp contrast, and, and looking at the broader, okay, so then seventeen A is no or small. B?
The proposed action will cause a permanent population in the city or town or village in which the project is located to grow by more than five percent. One of the data's we looked at was the census data, in two thousand and sixteen, it was identified as estimated at about fifteen hundred people. In that case, if seventy-nine more people moved to this destination as a result of the project, and data would increase about five percent more. The way that the seeker document reads it says, the population increase of five or more percent may have implications for a community, it may mean that there is a need for additional water, sewer infrastructure, new roads, new schools, or additional municipal facilities. Subpopulation increase also brings new building, there will be a need for more residences, residences and businesses to serve them, then an analyst section where they're suggesting what to analyze. Analyze, where living, where will living population live in, in already developed locations, in new housing developments? Will there need to be new transit systems, roads, or other similar infrastructure? Will that growth induce additional residential or non-residential growth? Are the jobs in the municipality to support that population, or will those people commute to different locations? Is the water and sewer system and other public services such as schools adequate to support the population growth? The example of a small impact that they gave, the proposed project will cause a minor increase in population, but there is inadequate, there is adequate infrastructure, housing, services, and capacity in the municipality to accommodate that growth without need for increasing capacity, the increase does not have a cumulative adverse impact.
And then, sorry, could you say the population stat that we're measuring the seventy-nine against again? What's the, fifteen hundred?
That was the census data, two thousand and sixteen. Seventy-three humans are proposed.
So, I think from our perspective, if, if you could certainly make the argument that it passes the five percent threshold...
It's five, it's five point three percent.
Right, and that's if everybody moves in, right, if people rebuild within, not so much, but, let's say I move from another place in Trumanburg, and somebody else moves in, I mean, you could go crazy with that. Let's just assume for a moment it's more than five percent, the main issue there, the thing they're asking you to focus on from a seeker perspective is infrastructure. Do you have the water, do you have the sewer, do you need to increase the schools, police, fire, et cetera? And the village obviously commissioned the fiscal impact study, which did an exhaustive analysis on every one of those issues, and determined, at the end of the day, there's no adverse impact, you don't need to significantly increase your capacity on anything, in fact, there's a little bit of... In fact, there's a little bit of net positive fiscally to the village.
And again, the 5%, so it's 79 and 1500, which is, right, 5.26 or 5.3% increase. Does that fall in the small impact, or is that a large, margin of large impact?
Just adding on because it ties into comprehensive plan and zoning. Especially in town municipalities, you're going to have a population increase anyway. Your comprehensive plan is looking forward both locally and regionally. How do you accommodate people that are looking to come here regardless of this project?
For being born and moving out of homes.
Right, right. So there's more than we're, just to say, it's not just a straight mathematical formula because your population in this county is in fact increasing. It's one of the few places in the state of New York where that's happening. So some of the population increase is going to occur regardless. From my reading, originally the comprehensive plan, you have a number of things in the plan to say, here's how we're gonna deal with this population. Cornell has an entire program on how to build housing within the county so we have less commuters coming from Portland, Seca, Puyanah, and kind of doing a lot of its north actually, so it keeps where the heavier populations is. So there's a second level of analysis, and yeah, you can go crazy on the math. But the question, what they're really looking at is exactly what it said. Do you need more school? Hire two or five, you're gonna keep the car hall? They work that.
Yeah, okay. So that would be 17B, small impact. C?
Proposed action is inconsistent with the local land use plans or zoning regulations.
I think Laura already attested to that zoning officer. So nowhere small in zoning regulations. So 17C, nowhere small. D?
Proposed action is inconsistent with any county plans or other regional land use plans.
No, we did the 239 referral, they said they had no issues.
Okay, so nowhere small on 17D. E?
Proposed action may cause a change in the density of the development that is not supported by the existing infrastructure or it's distant from existing infrastructure.
Okay, so that we addressed when we talked about B. So that would be small, no. 17B.
The proposed action is located in an area characterized by low density development that will require review or expanded coastal infrastructure.
Nowhere small on 17F. G?
The proposed action may induce secondary development impacts, examples residential or commercial development, not included in the proposed action.
Aside from hoping that there might be some great, clean business development happen in our community on plan form? Anybody having any sense? 17G, nowhere small. Okay. 18?
Consistency with community character. The proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character. It's for a definite potential yes. Item A, the proposed action may place for
I'm sorry, let's read a bit, it's helpful. Oh, you are, I'm sorry, I thought you said A. Okay, go ahead, sorry.
The proposed project includes residential uses consistent with the nearby uses and the character of the nearby uses and residences. The applicant has also demonstrated that the project is consistent with the village zoning code. That's what we identified as part of the overall title of consistency with character. Item A, proposed action may replace or eliminate existing facility structures or areas of historic importance to the community.
Oh, no, right? Right, we're looking at things, okay, so nowhere small on A. But E?
The proposed action may create a demand for additional community services. And we're just
Right, all the reports from the village.
You can see there's a lot of overlap between 17 and 18, they're making sure you hit the part.
Yeah, okay, 18B is nowhere small.
C? The proposed action may displace affordable or local housing in an area where there is a shortage of such housing.
Ah, that would be a no, nowhere small, yeah. Okay, 18C was a nowhere small, so D?
The proposed action may interfere with the use or enjoyment of officially recognized or designated public resources.
No, it's currently not a public resource. Okay, so 18D, nowhere small.
Proposed action is inconsistent with the predominant architectural scale and character.
Doesn't give a reference to what else. It just ends, right?
It's a community character.
Okay.
I think that brings us back to that and saying, uh huh, we have some serious architectural questions.
Okay.
Okay, so 18E is nowhere small.
Proposed action is inconsistent with the character of the existing natural landscape.
A complete change, 100% change.
Well, well, in the community though, not just the field. So that's how they're, how far back we're gonna pull that is. Yeah, so it's a field, but once it was, it was something, then it's a field and there's nothing.
That's too tough to answer that, I would not answer that. It's, I mean, it's a complete change over. Doesn't go with the character. You can argue it from, if you look at the school grounds and the huge parking lot, that's one thing. But that's a different reality. If you look at the two residential streets in back of it, with all the gardens and beautiful landscaping, and all the activity in the streets, and along Pennsylvania Avenue, it's completely different. So this is, to me, these two, I said, for me, these are the ones.
They are.
Are you taking into account the last day of plan for the project?
Yes, yes. I looked at, I was even coloring in the trees.
So that was the question through, yeah, okay.
I think that's
So this question, if I may. The natural landscape plays a large role in defining a community's character. For example, a municipality may define itself as rural community because of a large amount of open space and farming. Or one may be defined as a mountain town due to being in the arid index. Water bodies, open lands, forested lands, topography, natural communities and wildlife, and unique geological features all contribute to the natural landscape. When these resources are reduced, fragmented, or eliminated, the natural landscape can change. So it's not a question of whether you're changing the natural landscape. Of course, if you're developing something that's previously undeveloped, you will be. But you have to do, you do have to look at how it fits in the context of the surrounding development. And this is sort of the last undeveloped piece in close proximity to the village, surrounded by development. It's already been fragmented, yet we've designed it in a way that maintains the open space to the maximum extent we can, preserves those buffers around the edges, those additional forested areas, so.
But I think a thorough, really careful and long look into discussion site plan review.
No question, I know we're gonna be cursed, I do.
It really isn't like anything else.
Right.
Very, very different.
Yeah, I think, again, we're kind of differentiating between significant adverse environmental impact that requires a lot of additional study versus site planning. I mean, I have no doubt the plans are gonna continue to change, and you're gonna have a lot of feedback for us because we really haven't gotten into the meat at all since we submitted last December. We've been doing the engineering review and the seeker review, but I didn't know you got comments for us, and we're kind of looking forward to that piece, really, we are. Because you tend to view things very carefully, and you study them, and you give good feedback, and you work on it. Honestly, that's something more than that was just.
John, are you gonna mention your concept of the relocation of the buildings on that side of it?
Exactly.
I think that's premature.
Premature now, yeah. Because it's an, it's an interesting idea. It would eliminate the four cars in front of the building, which, how's that gonna work?
So 18F of the seeker, because we're still almost done with questions. I think then we just made a nowhere small impact. John, Rick?
You're taking them a while, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Dare I say that we need to revisit 1A, because we said we put the water table. We all feel like that was the first question, we had a lot on our minds. We answered all the questions subsequently, but we promised that we would leave that as a reminder to you. So I'm just doing my due diligence. Okay, wait, Laura, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, just let it, just, because once you move to the site plan review, it's like, then you wanna be kind of looking forward. And if this is the piece that's dealing with kind of further analysis, even though I know the stormwater management plan that's dealing with DDC and what's required, for the purposes really of going into that site plan review, would it be possible, since this stuff were in analytical mode possibly, to get some more data on, to project what would happen with the site, with water on the site if we put in numbers for higher amounts or extended periods of rainfall? I'm just concerned that there's still gonna be an apprehension about what's going on there. But even more, let's say if we learn certain things, like water flow might, you might have some sort of unexpected event or certain part of the site would be compromised, that could change your site plan review, I think. Does that make any sense?
I view that as kind of, we're getting to site plan review once for Dome Seeker. And I think tonight we made a lot of progress, we got a lot of feedback. We can, we're gonna spend a lot of time during site plan review on stormwater, and I think we're gonna get into a level that's even deeper than what we talked about, where these two guys are gonna explain to you exactly how the flow works, how it captures. I've seen Andy do a pretty good walkthrough that helped me understand it much better. Because as we made changes to the design, he has to do a lot of engineering work every time. And so we'll talk about, well, what if we did this? And, oh, no, that's gonna affect how we capture this stormwater in this area. So there's a lot more information as we get into the site plan review process and look through those features that we'll get into. And we can absolutely kind of look more closely at some of those.
And on that note, um, sorry, I'm sorry. You're talking about traffic study, really, really conservative numbers, right? Is it the same with the water study? Like, you're asking for really, really conservative numbers.
Well, I'm looking for what would be realistic beyond what is required now because we cannot, you know, we wanna be as realistic with the planning department.
Yeah, I guess what I would say is, in terms of conservativeness, traffic is here, DDC and groundwater, very conservative, but traffic's even more conservative. Because you have that background, you don't do that for stormwater.
So are you asking, is there any way, is that possible? Like, is that what you're asking for stormwater?
Yes, so
I think Laura might want to spend some time on the stormwater analysis.
Quick, a quick question on where we are on the water, because I'm also really interested. My understanding is you are going over the final calculations and stuff. And I assume, given the way you guys have gone over stuff for us in the past, there's gonna be significant back and forth or adds. Couple of weeks already has been, will be. So maybe the answer to Laura's question is, yeah, it sounds like they're getting more data actually speaking, and having heard your interests, you know, maybe Lance, you can as a part of the discussion, you know, get, take care of that.
We're trying to oversize everything. Bigger they are, the more they can store, the more reinvents they can handle. They're allocated, designed to a certain threshold, we ask them to design for more. They handle the what ifs as best as they can. But you can't design for Agus, Hurricane Agus, and reinvents.
And that's where, like, looking, and I know we're getting kind of off of it, but it's not just about, like, designing a bigger, you know, pipe or flow, but also looking at those little things, the methods of kind of a general planning so you don't have as much infernal circles, little things you can do to design.
Sure. You know, so we had talked about, I think, at the last meeting, John, you had asked Lance to do a little demonstration of overview of road design. Maybe we start, before we get too heavily into site plan review, which will be the next step after we get through the seeker documentation, I think it's a stormwater primer and a roadway primer and the track, although the traffic, the orders there, I think, hopefully
Documented.
It's well documented. But on the site design itself, those are two major issues. Looking for the working through.
So, okay, so that's, so then these questions have changed, the form gets reprinted. We didn't bring any additions that need to be indicated by the applicant. And then next meeting, it gets declared.
So I'll let Guy chime in where he needs to on this one. But ultimately, what we just did to complete the part two, I'll finalize it based on today's discussion. I'll resubmit it within a couple of days so that we'll all have a copy of what was discussed today. Ultimately, the next meeting, I presume, will go finalize the seeker document by continuing and answering part three, which is basically just a iteration of part two.
Right.
Reaffirming everything that you just said.
Yeah.
By resolution, a motion by the board.
Officially that, yeah. And then you're all going to have the same copy, the same date, and all that.
We have, we have documents too.
Okay.
So I'll supply you guys all with a part one and a part two that have been completely approved by the board. I'll come to you in an email and PDF, that's all I'll give to some of you, and then it can be distributed accordingly. And then in the next meeting, I'll bring with me a part three, that guy and his stuff, and then ultimately a resolution for the seeker determination of significance.
Okay. Great, do you have any other questions about that right now? No, okay, so this one, question by planning board members to MRV group. I actually didn't put that on the agenda, it's just end of this part of the draft. Does anyone have any questions on their minds while Lance is in the room? Knowing that we can continue to ask him questions through email, not today, but in perpetuity, Pat does. Does anyone have this time, has it been on their minds? Yeah? Okay, so let's get that, oh, business.
We have a mini meeting to read some of the letters.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And so let's, I'll resort to you. We have this notion of 7/10 to October, and so I'll probably get emails of all of us. We won't have to pull if we can just answer that, right? I think 7/10 is, I think that will have to run.
And so we're, as a decision, we did that, we sort of pick out some of the ones that you're most interested in, and maybe
Yes, and certainly, yeah.
What we talked about, what we're expecting. Is it, there are certain themes that were repetitive throughout, and that the idea would be to touch target those themes with Jay Miller that he's represented with that theme.
Yeah, because we have very good, very intelligent, long letters, you know, pro and con.
Some of those long letters aren't necessary. But they're long.
They're long, some are tedious for sure. But I think there are quite a few worth reexamining and absorbing.
So for ease of access to those materials, Vicky and John, can we say that you might go look and make sure they're all in Dropbox? Do you wanna highlight and isolate and apply the ones you'd like us to specifically review? Are they all already, they are?
I ruled out two, three, and I find one of the most, you know, one of the federating ones by Mr. Mason, former chair of zoning in Town District policies, and list a chair of the
So before, that's just an opportunity for all of us to make sure that the letters have been read, that we've addressed, come to and if you haven't already, in them, not so much. Everybody read this and just, or we're gonna talk about it, okay? Okay, cool, any other, my business?
You know, I almost hesitate to bring this up, but, you know, we do do other things than this project, right? So, and one of the things that's been on the agenda for a long time now is putting into effect, and unfortunately Matt wasn't with us long enough to make this happen, a way of actually following up with landlords, businesses, on the conditions that we've imposed as part of site plan review. I don't, I'm not really satisfied that it's actually doing. And I, or if we are, it's ad hoc. And sometimes when things are ad hoc, they turn out to be not fair, you know, and things like that. So I just wanna put that back on the table.
So is the question of that, is that the COs officer, or is it the minister?
I think it is, because it's about, it's more about enforcement of the, you know, the site planning process. And not that we've had, and I think it'll be easy in some ways, because we haven't had very many large site plan issues. But.
Why was it a question of?
It also seems, it also seems like, you know, it's kind of important that when we go through a detailed process, as we have done, it seems that we actually then have a way of making sure that that's in fact what happened down to, you know, going through the conditions that the planning board was concerned about. And it's possible if that's happening, but I said, I'm not sure it's systematic.
I think that's, and I don't know what was raised earlier, but landed the fact that I'm not a planner, and so we're sort of minus that formal function. And so, yeah, it's identifying that need, and then how is that being met, or how, you know, and so that's something I can raise. I guess you raise it, you can raise it, you can kind of make a joint.
Okay.
Raise that need to.
And maybe the.
And.
Or the person that consolidates planning, that function, you know.
Okay.
You know, if I could add something to that, since we're going to be looking at visual material, that we have a display panel on that wall or a wall here, we can consolidate maybe what's up here a little bit better. So that we can actually look at what is we're talking.
So why don't I put on my site that to coordinate with Tammy, to see what we can get for resources and to have those in place.
It doesn't have to be much, a four by eight home style panel, a little wooden.
Do you have anything that you could, that's what you could do?
Yeah, I have one.
Do you?
I have several.
Oh, believe? Can I put that on your plate? Okay, the better displays.
Four by eight, there. It would take two large drawings.
You need help getting that here?
Hmm?
Do you need help?
No, Hank Jr. might try.
Excellent. Okay, that's done. Great. And so then Laura, you and I will help explore who can help follow up with other site plan contingencies to make sure.
Right, Guy, were you, were going to say something?
I was gonna say, it's a camera problem everywhere, because the normal method, even in code enforcement, is to investigate with a complaint system. So there, you don't have the ability to legislate a penalty for a violation of site plan. That's not really how it works. So you have to build a trigger inside, so a lot of times your site conditions are tied to building permits, certificate of occupancies, things like that. So once they're already built, everybody goes, well, who am I care? I don't have to maintain that. I have my bill to bill. Yeah, but someday you're gonna need a building permit, and you're not gonna be able to get it because you don't have sufficient access under state law. Yeah, I'll be able to that when it comes. So you have to, you put in conditions that give you the ability to say, we're not gonna approve that, we're not gonna consider it in a site plan until you come into compliance. There's ways to do it, but it's still going to be, unless you wanna have a very large staff, it's still going to be complete based.
Okay.
I don't know how you necessarily go to every site, every house and inspect to make sure that when somebody puts a new wall in their bathroom, that they put in a GMI circuit and install it correctly.
What about the tradition?
That's one of the components. That's part of what the code enforcement does.
Well, the other thing that's happening is the zoning, the review of the zoning ordinance for important things that need to be dealt with, and it sounds like some things could be legislated. And that would be the time to take a look at getting some of those kind of trigger things in there, or, you know, building in with, you know, some. Well, I actually think the planning board right now, you know, those conditions requiring, you know, a developer to get back to you periodically. But, you know, in any of it, it is.